In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NOR Kim and may be recorded by other local media. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order is minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the November 18, 2019 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the November 18, 2019 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
The motion and a second by Mr. Schultz. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay, moving right along to board member reports. Would any board members like to provide any reports?
I'll make a comment.
Okay, Mr. Wallner.
So, it's very exciting, and I don't think I'm spilling on Mike's thing, but the CPC did finish the final of the 10-year master plan, so, you know, you can read through the 159 pages, or I'm going to share where the board has summary highlights, and you can just look over what they're talking about. And tomorrow night, Mike, if I'm talking about anything that you're going over, this is Danielle, that you prepared for us, and you have one. And it just gives, you know, the bullets of what this is all about and where the main emphasis is, and I think it's a great summary of what's all inside there. I know they're getting together tomorrow to talk about how to get the word out to the town. I'll be glad to sit in and help out any way I can, but it's just very exciting to see this come to fruition, and I realize it's like seven years of people's putting a lot of time in residents, town employees, you know, volunteers, committees have put a lot of time into all these studies, and it's really nice to see this come together after seven years, and it's really meaningful data. So, that's one thing I'll say about that, and it's also exciting to know the CPC, looks like they selected a vendor for consultant for doing the wastewater package treatment plant at the intersections of 62 and 28, and there is an aspect of development of that area. The ones they selected are the ones that I thought were the best of the three, so we're on the same page, and I was asking for an update too, the facilities master plan as well. They picked a supplier for doing the facilities master plan, also with some sort of an emphasis on the 62-28 step.
Moving forward, yeah.
And so all these studies are coming together, and, you know, hopefully, you know, six to nine months, we're going to have the results of all these studies, so we can put a big plan together, you know, to weigh out how sewage fits in, how, what buildings we need, how this fits in with downtown. And the last thing is, I know it's going to come up in January, is the COA and the SSAT team from the CIT group, the age-friendly.
Love initials you got there, one second.
Yeah, don't make me define, I'll take you an hour. Anyways, the people that are concerned about the aging, you know, the Aging Well Initiative, in January, we're going to hear some proposals about that. And so all these coming together are very exciting times for our town, so glad to report on those good news.
And just to echo what you said, to thank the CPC and the master advisory group, the members of the master advisory group and the town planner for all the efforts over the length of years and years that they've put into this.
This is really good. It's really a good combination of a lot of efforts, so it's nice we're going to be able to see the results of it and be able to weigh in on a future direction for the town, so it's wonderful.
Thank you. Any other board member reports? All right, moving right along. Next order of business is the review and vote for special employee status.
Madam Chair, I move to reconfirm the vote of December 17, 2018, designating the following positions as having special municipal employee status pursuant to MGL Chapter 268A. Parks and Rec, infant toddler instructor, after-school instructor, coach, summer program instructor, coach, summer program director, summer program assistant director, summer counselor. Police, matron, crossing guard. Council on Aging, van driver. Finance Committee Recording Secretary, Police Department Co-Facilitator for the Youth Action Team, and to add the following position as having special municipal employee status pursuant to MGL Chapter 268A. Library substitute, library technician.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. We do have a public hearing. We have maybe four and a half minutes before the 7:30 hour that it was advertised, so why don't we try to, let's skip to number 11. I think we could probably resolve that one. I'm sorry to go. This is what I always do. Can you?
Legal bills?
No.
If we finish that one, we can do number 10 probably easily, relatively easily.
By the time I find it, we could probably do the public.
That time. 10, I know. 10 and 11, I think we can accomplish.
There's 10.
Yeah, grab 10. We'll move on to number 10.
We can do 10. It's got to get done, an hour later.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Mark Hamel to the Facilities Master Plan Committee as a representative of the Department of Public Works through June 30, 2020.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Gilberto.
Very brief explanation. So, Mr. Hamel will take the seat held by former Town Building Superintendent Julie Spurnight, who was donating her time to the committee's service after her departure. However, the scheduling of the meetings and her work responsibilities have proved to be difficult to bear, I think, and so we appreciate her time for the past few months, and we welcome Mark to the committee. Mark being the new Town Building Superintendent.
Great. All right, this is a roll call, name, vote. Any other discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Hamel.
Mr. Wallner.
Mr. Hamel.
Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Hamel.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Mr. Hamel.
And Mr. Hamel.
Okay, I'll look again. Might be stuck or something.
Might be.
Yes, we don't seem to have legal bills.
Do you have the motion or no?
I do, but I have a high preventing appearance.
Is it CISA?
Madame Chair, I move to approve legal bills for October 2019 in the amount of $14,675.09 as follows. Copeland and Page, $6,777.59. Copeland and Page Labor, $3,0159. 20 Elm Street, 40B Project, $4,738.50, for a total of $14,675.09.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the members. As you know, it's in the packet, they were pretty detailed billing. There was quite a bit of work done by the, by our legal firm. So, motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, we can move on to the public hearing, which is number seven, and I'm just going to read the public hearing notice while we.
Read, digest, large print.
I know. My glasses are this one. The Town of North Reading Select Board Notice of Public Hearing in accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws, a public hearing will be held by the Select Board in Room 14, 235 North Street on Monday, December 16 at 7:30 PM, on the application of Smokes &amp; Snacks Inc. for a change of directors and officers, and new stockholder, and transfer of stock. License to be exercised at 202 North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts. I see the licensee here with his representative. Why don't you come up, introduce yourselves, and we can begin the hearing.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Tom Truex of Salem, Massachusetts, here on behalf of the corporation, Smokes &amp; Snacks Inc. To my left here is Mr. Vimal Patel. He is the proposed new manager. He's also the new, proposed new shareholder, president, director, and treasurer of the corporation. Essentially, what he's doing is Atmuran Patel's interest in the corporation, which was a 50% interest, he is purchasing that interest. He's also replacing Mr. Atmuran Patel as the president, treasurer, and director of the corporation. Mr. Patel comes before you with a little, coming up on the third year anniversary of the store when it was purchased. He's been there from the get-go. He comes with that experience working at the store all that time. He's full-time there. He's tip-certified, and we expect the transition from the current manager, Sonal Patel, to him to be pretty much seamless. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Members have any questions?
Basically, it's a family transaction, right? So, some things change other than on paper and.
Well, there is money being transferred.
There's money being transferred, but as far as responsibilities and all the rest, he's pretty much been assuming the responsibilities for a while now, anyway.
Yes, from the get-go.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Gilberto.
The current manager of record, Sonal, I believe, is that individual's name? Will that person still be involved or no?
No.
No, okay.
Any one else?
I will note that the applicant has been submitting served safe documentation along with the renewal packet each year, so we, on paper, we've had him as an employee at the establishment as well, so.
Mr. Schultz.
Just a quick question for you guys, I guess, of all the applicants. What mechanisms do they have in place for checking IDs to not serve to underage?
Besides themselves, they do have a card reading machine, though I've heard that the card reading machine doesn't always, you know, cover out of state licenses.
You've seen our meetings.
Yeah, I heard about it. And obviously, he knows the statute doesn't cover, you know, a good out-of-state fake ID, so.
Do you accept out-of-state IDs?
We do with the second IDs.
Do you, do you accept if someone showed you an ID over the phone, do you accept that? I saw that happen.
So you're out of luck.
And they did not accept the IDs.
Madam Chair, you're out of luck then.
[laughing] You got my license.
When you get carded, you're out of luck.
It wasn't me. I actually carded the woman in front of me in the line because she looked too young to purchase.
Hard to believe.
All right, all right. Any other questions? That's good to see that you have those systems in place, even if it is a reader.
It's not foolproof.
So you have to be on your toes. So, since it's a public hearing, I'm going to invite anyone who's here in the audience to speak in favor, to come forward, seeing none and hearing none. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the license transfer, seeing none and hearing none. Do we have a motion?
We do, Madam Chair. I move to approve the change of officers and directors for the package store wine and malt beverage license for Smokes &amp; Snacks Incorporated, DBA Route 28, Lucky Mart, 202 North Street.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Oh, there's also a change of manager.
Oh, you're going to read the second.
For the package store wine and malt beverage license for smoking snacks, 202 North Street, from Sonal Patel to Vimal N. Patel.
That's what I seconded.
That's right, yes. Okay, so on the completely read motion, we have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, sir.
Do well.
And Jane, I'm signing, we're signing.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I closed that portion of the hearing. I thought I said that.
You may have, I mean, we may have missed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Nobody was here to talk to us about this. Okay, and so our next order of business, looks like we have quite a few licensing.
Quite a few.
Madam Chair, just by way of very brief explanation, we're in a unique situation where we're only having one meeting here in the month of December, so we've really done our best to give the board a complete packet. If you were to look in the share file folder, there is a separate file called motions. I think it says there's a dash two for the renewals, so they were all put in there this afternoon. We've got it down to, I believe, six or seven establishments that are ready for a clean renewal, and then the last motion is for a renewal for those six or seven establishments. We basically asked the board to approve the renewal, but authorized that the licenses be held in my office until there's compliance with the issues that are outstanding, and I can talk further about those when we get to that motion, it's the last one. For the new board members, what basically happens is there are a series of motions. They will be accompanied by a series of licenses that you'll need to affix your signature to after the vote. I think most of them are in front of you, laying there at this point in a folder, so there is a lot of paperwork that needs to be signed and.
So we're going to just have a signing party after the meeting?
It's the board's pleasure. At times, we've tried to sign on an ongoing basis.
Just pass them around.
Keep going.
That's what we do.
We basically try to reassemble them, you know, at the end, so.
Walk and chew gum, folks.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, okay. So, but for purposes of the votes, we're.
This is where you need a rubber stamp.
We're independently approving of these renewals.
Okay, we're ready.
Oh, no, we're not. We have one vote, I guess. All right, go ahead.
I'll take a deep breath. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common victular licenses to expire December 31, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Andrea's House of Pizza, Beyond Bagels, China Cuisine, Dairy Queen of North Reading, Dos Lobos, Dunkin' Donuts, Whole Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, North Reading, Maine, Dunkin' Donuts, Shawna Donuts, Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, Porchu Cafe Incorporated, J Mac Incorporated, DBA Subway, Joe Fish, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, McDonald's Restaurant, Molly Store Incorporated, DBA Rye's Store, Nan Center Cafe, Papagino's, Sports Spirits and Steaks, Starbucks Coffee, Swar, Swaran, Swarch, I'm still in Swar. LLC, DBA Subway, The Hornets Nest, The Lobster Claw, and Wendy's.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All of, all those in favor?
Aye.
There are several.
Several categories of the motion.
Categories all lumped into one on our agenda. I was trying to check off as you were going along, but you went so fast, I may have missed them, so.
So, I will move to common victular, all alcohol. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common victular, all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements. China Cuisine, Dos Lobos, J I Crystal Incorporated, DBA Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, Porchu Cafe Incorporated, Joe Fish, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, Sports Spirits and Steaks.
Second.
I have a, I have a motion, and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next order of business.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following Class 1 licenses to expire January 1, 2021, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Bobcat, Brian Dushak DBA National Sales, Melkonian Subaru, North Reading Motorsports.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Madam Chair, I'd like the record to show that I will be abstaining for any motions in relation to Class 1 and Class 2 licenses, because I have a family member that holds a Class 2 license in the town and want to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest, so I will be abstaining on Class 1 and Class 2 licenses.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. All right, so, any other discussion? On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, excuse me, I'm sorry, I have a motion, I didn't have a second.
Second.
Mr. Schultz.
You're in second.
Who's seconded?
We had a second.
Oh, I didn't hear, okay, I apologize.
You were in first.
All right, Mr. Schultz, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we have four in favor, one abstaining.
Thank you.
So, Mr. O'Leary, you, and members of the board, you, I was puzzled because I realized I have a daughter that works at two of the establishments who are up for license renewal, so if the members would please recall that vote so that I can abstain.
Is it the common victular, all alcohol, or the one before, or both?
I only checked off, as I was going along, I only checked it off the common victular.
Do we have a conflict? I mean, you don't have a financial interest in these relationships.
No, and I, I mean, she's an employee, but nevertheless, if that's.
Would you like to withdraw your vote on those renewals?
I would, Mr. Gilberto, just to avoid any appearance of.
This is on the common victular's license?
Well, it was one of each.
Common victular and also the alcohol.
She's a hard worker. She has two jobs.
That's good.
Yes, one is a, one is an all alcohol.
All right, so Madam Chair, I move to reconsider license renewals, common victular licenses.
And I, I'm going to abstain because I have a.
No, but this is to reconsider.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on that basis, I'm sorry, members, but yes, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Hey, thanks, Ms. Gonzalez. All those in favor?
Aye.
And likewise, Madam Chair.
No, no, don't, Madam Chair. I move to renew the following common victular's licenses to expire December 31, 2020, subject to all regulatory departments as previously read.
Okay, and I'm going to, I'll alert the members, I have a, I'm going to abstain because I have a child that works at one of the, one of the facilities, so. Did I need to second that?
Sure.
Seconded.
So, seconded by Mrs. Gonzalez.
All those.
And the chair will call for, Vice Chair will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed and abstaining.
And I'm abstaining, yes.
And abstaining, so 401. Madam Chair, I move to reconsider the common victular, all alcohol license previously taken.
So, I'm sorry. See, we were doing good on time. I was just going along.
That's okay.
Can't have that.
So the motion.
[laughing].
And Mrs. Gonzalez, second?
Aye, second.
And I'm abstaining because I have a daughter, the same.
Look at this huge crowd, this guy has empty seats here.
The same child that works at another one.
All right, so, on the motion to reconsider, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed and one abstention.
Thank you.
All right, now on the motion, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to renew the following common victular, all alcohol licenses to expire December 31, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements. China Cuisine, Dos Lobos, Junior Crystal DBA, Ginger Gourmet, Porchu Cafe, Joe Fish, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, Sports Spirits and Steaks, seconded by Mrs. Gonzalez.
And I abstain from that.
And the chair has notified us that she will be abstaining because she has a child that works for one of the establishments, so on the main motion as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, one abstention. 401.
I couldn't hear anything.
Are you done now?
Thank you.
You're back on.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Thank you, members.
And Jane, if you have any problems, let me know.
But we have another problem.
We have another problem. Likewise, on the, we have the Class 2 license coming up. I'm going to abstain with respect to Route 28 Motors because they are past client of mine.
Thank you.
But I will vote on the other three.
All right.
So just separate the motion.
I can just abstain from the whole thing too. Probably I shouldn't vote on that even if I have a line in that bucket. I'll just abstain from the.
What did you say?
I'm abstaining from this.
Because we, because we've listed them all together on the motion, that's why.
Poor Jane's has another quote about three seconds.
Oh, my God.
Keep it simple.
All right.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following Class 2 licenses to expire January 1, 2021, subject to all regulatory department requirements. ANJ Auto, Brian Dushak DBA National Sales, NICA Incorporated DBA Route 28 Motors, P&amp;T Auto Sales.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Wallner. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Two abstaining.
Abstaining, abstaining, two abstentions.
What if three of us have this thing?
Huh?
What if three of us have?
The rule of necessity would kick in.
Yeah.
So that was Mr. O'Leary and.
And Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Schultz. 3-0, I keep doing that.
Yep.
Okay.
Just for the new members' information, Class 1 Auto license automatically gets a Class 2, you know, so Class 1 is new, Class 2 is used, and Class 3 is basically junk.
Okay.
All right, so Class 1 license already automatically gets a Class 2 license. That's why I abstained on the Class 1 and Class 2.
But you can go with the junk.
But I can go with the junk.
Okay.
We're all back for the junk.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following Class 3 license to expire January 1, 2021, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Dushak DBA National Sales.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion?
Again, this is just for the new members' informational purposes. Mr. Dushak operates his business out of his home, so there are no junk cars on premises, some of them is Class 2 and some of them is Class 1. So we've been reluctant over the years to have a junkyard, you know, in North Reading, so. When he came and applied for the Class 2 and the Class 1, 1, 2, and 3, he basically just deals online at broker's deals as opposed to housing vehicles on his premises.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device licenses to expire December 31, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Andrea's House of Pizza, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, Loyal Order of Moose, Papagino's, Sports Spirits and Steaks.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schultz, well, Mr. Schultz. Any discussion?
Did he say it? Did he say second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Teague, do we have to renew Ts, or does that just start?
With their automatic amusement license?
Yeah.
It's covered under the last motion, which is one motion without standing issues. But yes, I ask the same motion.
Does that come back to us again?
It is in there. And the billiard licenses are on a different schedule, I believe it is.
Okay.
And does not require a hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following fraternal club, all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Loyal Order of Moose.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package store, all alcohol licenses to expire December 31, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements. East Gate Liquors, New England Beverage and Redemption, One Stop Liquors.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary, any further?
Oh, it's O'Leary.
T.
Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package store wine and malt beverage licenses to expire December 31st, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Christopher's Market, Convenience Plus, Molly Store, DBA Rye Store, Smokes and Snacks Incorporated, DBA Route 28 Lucky Mart.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Wallner, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following jukebox license to expire December 31st, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Loyal Order of Moose.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following livery license to expire December 31st, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Metro Town Car.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary, all the, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following Sunday Entertainment's license to expire December 31st, 2020, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Sports Spirits and Steaks.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following licenses and that they be held in the office of the town administrator until the licensees have met satisfactory compliance of all issues with the departments listed. Captain, do I read that whole thing? Captain Pizza, Common Victular, Health Department, Cowabungas, Automatic Amusement Devices, Health Building, Heavenly Donuts, Common Victular, Health, Group One Hillview, Common Victular, Common Victular All Alcohol, Sunday Entertainment, Admin Fire Building, Mario's Restaurant, Tay, Common Victular, Common Victular Wine and Malt, Finance, Speedway, Package Store Wine and Malts, Police Fingerprint, Teresa's Prime, Common Victular, Common Victular All Alcohol, Sunday Entertainment, Automatic Amusement Device, Health, Finance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Schultz, and members of the board, I'm going to abstain from the vote because I have a family member who's employed at one of those establishments, so. Do I have a, any discussion or input, Mr. Gilberto, regarding that particular vote, please?
Sure, so, what we've done here is we've conditioned the renewal that there be compliance with specific, specific departments for which there are outstanding issues, you know, I believe that in most of these cases, if not all of these cases, there is an opportunity to cure these issues before the license would need to be issued on December 31st, like many of these establishments are making progress towards compliance, which is certainly encouraging, but we've, you know, basically structured it as we have in the past to allow that the board can take its action to renew, but that the license would be held, so if the compliance hasn't been addressed, or a path to compliance hasn't been agreed to between the regulatory department and the establishment, come January 1st, it would not be able to operate for the purpose that's identified in the particular license, knock on wood, we have not had that come to pass, at least in my time here, in approving these, and I'm hopeful that that will be the case this year as well, but nonetheless, we do request that the board vote as, as the motion reads.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gilberto, so I have, Ms. Gonzalez?
Will we, will we sign them?
You will, and we will hold them and not issue them until the issues are resolved.
Okay, so...
I should say, you're asked to, I should say, you will, you're asked.
You will.
You must.
You're not leaving until...
So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstaining.
Licensees who failed to renew for 2020, North Reading Christopher Club Incorporated.
Yes, so, after the renewal occurs, we are required to report to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission those who have not renewed for licenses, so that, that's a separate vote with a form that I believe is in the package on the site as well, so we'd ask the board to take that vote as well, vote to sign.
North Reading?
We didn't prepare a motion.
We all signed.
Okay, we don't, so, the, the motion would be to vote to, vote to sign the report to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission.
So, does this mean they won't provide, provide an opportunity to renew, I mean, what if they get it in this week?
These are voluntary non-renewals, so Knights of Columbus is not renewing, and the other establishment that's on there, I'm sorry.
That's the only one listed on...
Yeah, so they've, they've, they're going through a transition for the use of their property, and they, and they've notified us maybe six weeks ago that they were not intending to renew, so that was anticipated. We did have one other notable non-renewal, it was not an alcoholic beverage license, but Mike's Pizza and Roast Beef, which did not apply to me.
Okay, Mr. Schultz.
Speaking of that, I know it's been in the news, the owner has just been sentenced for tax evasion for that property, which means the town has owed a lot of money in back meal tax, what is being done for the town to recoup that money, is there anything in tandem with the state and the federal prosecution on that?
So I, I would just note before, you know, commenting further, that I have filed a disclosure with the select board that I do have an interaction with the family that I'm not going to elaborate on, but I have disclosed with the select board that there is a relationship through youth, youth activity, but that being said, we are working with town council and have had some initial conversation with the Department of Revenue with regard to that issue, I can tell you that it's something that the State Department of Revenue is aware of, that's where our portion of the state meals tax passes through to come to the town, and we can expect that there, there would be a sort of catch-up with regard to what we might be owed, but it's probably some number of months away before it will occur. But they are aware of the issue.
They're standing in our shoes.
Effectively, we have no direct access to them, and I would also note that the issues that you're talking about, Mrs. Schultz, relate to tax years through 2015, there are three, almost three other tax years for which, you know, there, there may be questions.
Right, thank you.
I should also note, since it may be out there, that the establishment was visited by the, the health director today and was issued a, a suspension notice with a hearing date scheduled for January, so, that's not directly related to the issues that have been identified here in this discussion, it is more related to health and safety-related issues, but for those who may have seen that notice, that's the, that's the background on that.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I, do I have a second on that motion to sign that?
Second.
Mr. O'Leary, motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Madam Chair, in accordance with the Chapter 121 of the Acts of 2016 and MGLC 666A, I move to appoint Donald Stats as Records Access Officer for the Town of North Reading Fire Department for a term to run concurrently with his employment as fire chief.
Okay, so we're moving on to the next order of business, which is appointments, all right, so I have a motion, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
A second by Mr. Wallner, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have the, the lia, the state ethics liaison and town treasurer too?
Yes. You want them in an order?
Yeah, you might as well. What do you have next?
Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Barbara Stats as the State Ethics Commission Liaison for a term to expire on December 31st, 2020.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post discussion, she does a good job of chasing me down every year.
Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Mary Ann McKay as town treasurer for a term to expire on December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to place and nomination the following names for appointment as member of the Commission on Disabilities for terms to expire December 31st, 2022, Gloria Mastro, Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz.
Second.
Motion and a second, and we'll hear from the liaison, Mr. Wallner.
I don't know what to say.
Oh, do you, do you have any recommendations for us?
No, Gloria's a great choice, yes, okay, sorry, Gloria would be a great choice.
This is one or two?
Two of two, right, Mr.?
Yeah, and, and Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz.
Who's been at a lot of our meetings.
Yes, she has.
Into the wee hours of the night.
I miss her today.
Actually, she's not here tonight.
I know, the one time she's part of it.
So it's two, two nominations placed and for two positions, right, and this is a roll call vote for Ms. Mastro and Ms. Coolidge-Stolz, Ms., Ms., any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary. Do we have a second, by the way?
Sure, second it.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. It doesn't say, but that's okay, it's two, is it, two, it's two individuals nominated for two posts, so this is an easy vote. Mr. O'Leary.
Gloria Mastro and Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz.
Mr. Wallner.
Elizabeth Mastro and...
Elizabeth Mastro.
Gloria.
Gloria Mastro, what'd you say?
Gloria.
Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz.
Oh, I didn't see this, okay, yeah, yes, Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz.
All right, Mr. Schultz.
Ms. Mastro and Mrs. Coolidge-Stolz.
Ms. Gonzalez. Gloria Mastro and Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz.
Okay, Gloria Mastro and Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz. Sorry, Mr. Wall, we typically, we typically hear from the liaison in, in terms of making the recommendations, that's why I was...
I didn't realize, I'm sorry.
That's all right, it's two for two, so that's a neat, that's...
That's the next one that I'm struggling on.
You recommended both, that's all, all right.
Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following names for reappointment, appointment as members of the Historical Commission for terms to expire on December 31st, 2022, two openings, Dana Rowe incumbent, Douglas Doty, James Chaney, and Chris Lippert.
Mr. Gilberto?
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right, Mr. O'Leary seconded that motion, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so, there's a misprint in the, in the motion, the body of the motion, it should say members of the Forest Committee and not the Historical Commission.
Oh, okay.
So...
Forest Committee.
That's what I seconded.
I thought so.
I thought so, yeah.
So, Miss, okay, so Mr. Wallner, Mr. Wallner, you're up on that one too, as a liaison.
I definitely recommend Dana Rowe, and I don't have any opinion about the other three, so if anybody has any input on that, I'd appreciate it.
Again, I've known Doug Doty for, for a number of years, has been intimately involved with a lot of, how do we say, environmental issues in the town, and I think he'd be a good addition to the Forest Committee.
Any of the other members have any input?
Again, not to detract from Mr. Chaney and Mr. Lippert, because I appreciate them stepping forward, and I think it's important for applicants to understand, you know, we only have so many positions to fill, it's not like someone beat someone else out, you know, we want you to have continued interest in, in serving the community, and again, we only have so many positions to fill, and don't be disappointed if you don't get it this time, because chances are you'll, there'll be a vacancy and we'll give it to you the next time.
Mr. Schultz, Mr. Schultz.
My Irish guy?
Mr. Schultz.
The German Irish guy, I don't know any of the four people here, but I just want to take a minute to thank everybody who has applied for these positions, I think it's great for the town, we've put out the bat signal on social media asking people to apply for these positions, and we did get a number of applicants in, and I just want to say thank you, that's great, and as Mr. O'Leary said, you know, there's not room for everybody on everything, but there's room for everybody on something, I guess the best way I could put it, thank you to the townsfolk who have stepped up and put their name out there and threw their hat in the ring.
Okay, this is a roll call vote for, a roll call name vote, Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Rowe and Mr. Doty.
Mr. Wallner?
Mr. Rowe and Mr. Doty.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Rowe and Mr. Doty.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Mr. Rowe and Mr. Doty.
And I'll vote Mr. Rowe and Mr. Chaney.
Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following name for reappointment as member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2022, there are two openings, there's only one name, Stone Jaycee, who is an incumbent, I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I recommend Stone Jaycee.
Roll call name vote, Mr. O'Leary.
Stone Jaycee.
Mr. Wallner.
Stone Jaycee.
Mr. Schultz.
Stone Jaycee.
Ms. Gonzalez. Stone Jaycee.
And Stone Jaycee. Maybe we can get one of those nominees for the Forest Committee to jump over to fill the other, would fill the other post on the Historic Commission, it'd be nice to get a full committee, they have two different, two different responsibilities, but all good for the town.
Martin's Pond looks a little thin too, so it'd be nice to get somebody over there.
Speaking of which, Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following names for reappointment, appointment as member of the Martins Pond Committee for terms to expire on December 31st, 2022, there are five openings, we have two names, Lawrence Soucy incumbent, James Greer.
I recommend each of them.
You second it first.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Wallner, who wants to recommend Lawrence Soucy and James Greer, it's a roll call name vote, Mr. O'Leary.
Lawrence Soucy, James Greer.
Mr. Wallner.
Lawrence Soucy and James Greer.
Mr. Schultz.
Lawrence Soucy and James Greer.
Ms. Gonzalez. Lawrence Soucy and James Greer.
And Lawrence Soucy and James Greer.
May I just comment on the people who have resigned from their posts, they have been dedicated, Janet Akosia, Laurie Lyons, and Catherine Skinelli, they have been dedicated for probably 20, 25 years to working on the Martins Pond, and they had huge success doing the Oktoberfest that led to the park that we have, which is a wonderful park now, I remember back in the 90s doing trash pickup in the neighborhood that was originally organized by these people, so they've been really dedicated stewards of taking care of our area, and we're going to miss them sorely, but I'm glad Larry continues on, especially, he's been part of that group and been doing a good job, so, we all want.
Thank you, Mr. Wallner.
I'll tell you, just to echo the comments and add to it, I mean, the work that's been done by these people with grand money, collaboration with Merrimack College, and again, the progress that's been made as far as, you know, cleaning up Martins Pond, addressing Martins Pond, keeping it visible, public eye, it's been huge, and again, it's a tremendous asset to the community, and these people have dedicated a significant number of hours and years to highlighting it and keeping it, keeping us focused on it, and I hope we get some more committed people to continue their work, but to them, thank you very much, and it's greatly appreciated, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Moving on.
Sorry.
We do, it's, it's James Small, it's written in there for a reappointment, Jason Small, excuse me.
Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Jason Sm... Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Jason Small as the Redding Municipal Light Department Advisory Board Representative for a term to expire December 31, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to reappoint the following individuals to the Taxation Aid Committee for terms to expire December 31, 2022. Debbie Carbone, Assessor, Mary Ann McKay, Treasurer.
Second.
So a motion and a, excuse me, a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Mr. Walner, you're recommending both, right? All right. Two for two? It's a roll call? Oh, yes, Deb, Deborah Carbone and Mary Ann. All right, it's just a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we going to just jump a little bit out of order, folks, and go to the TA's report?
Thank you.
I was watching on TV.
Thank you. You're the one.
Now who's watching our votes?
Yeah, you're one of two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Where Mr. Hertz has taken the time to come to the meeting, I thought it might be appropriate to take this out of order. So one of the items that's in the TA report that I would be reading, normally reading at the end of the meeting, is a reference to the ongoing work of the Bike Trail Feasibility Study, which Mr. Hertz has basically single-handedly undertaken at this point. So I'm just going to read from what the update is, which is that their feasibility study, their consultant, BSC Group, will be contacting property owners that either abut or may be impacted directly by a potential trail route segment here in town. And I attached a copy of a draft letter that they'll be sending out, I think as soon as this week, to a list of recipients, which I also included as well. An informational meeting on this may be scheduled at a later point in time with them, but basically the idea is to approach these individuals and get a sense of what their thoughts are and how interested or open they may or may not be, maybe even a better understanding of some of the physical challenges for the parcels. Some of the parcels are immediately adjacent to the Riverwood property, the former Smith property as well, which we've had some initial conversation about how to approach those. But the rest of the properties are sort of outside that buffer. I think, Phil, you want to add anything with regard to where things stand, or maybe just a general update on the project?
Yeah, I mean, we're moving along. We have a primary route. The most complicated area is right by Riverwoods, is how do you get across Park Street? And to follow the rail line closely would make the trail go within 30, 20, 30 feet of a couple of houses. So it's still possible those property owners might give an easement, but it would go, it would go close to their homes, so they might, they might object. The route that would pass furthest from the homes would be to work something out with the people that abut the Riverwood area, particularly the Smiths, primarily Linda Smith, her property. And the idea would be to try to get access back to that property and be able, for people to use it, which logically would, there are two routes into that property. One is via the bridges that connect up to Route 62 Elm Street, and one would be Wright Street. And ideally, we could get some sort of easement to run a right-of-way from the land to Wright Street, so people could get to it right from Wright Street. On the bridges, BSC, when we walked the area, they said that those two bridges would most likely qualify for state funding for rebuilding under a small bridges program, and that they would be brought up to code for large trucks, fire trucks, or for that matter Linda Smith's vehicles. So it might be an interesting compromise to, the town would need to have title to those bridges. It couldn't be just an easement for the state to give funding for those bridges. The state would need bridges, and Mike's going to schedule some time with the town council where we can, where we can talk about this in more detail. But I think this is, we've got an opportunity with the trail to use the consultants and to think about maybe finally having a way of getting in there, figure out where parking might be and how we might access it. So then, if the trail ran that way, it would, the rail trail itself is on the southern end of Riverwood. You'd run the trail through, through the park, through the Riverwood area, and it would connect into Wright Street, and the trail would run down Wright Street and then cross 62 right at my property, just coincidentally, and go across 62 there. And it would pass not near any homes. We wouldn't widen Wright Street, it would run on Wright Street. Maybe the speed limit would go down a bit, which I think the people on Wright Street would like. It would become, people walk on the street now, and it might be a very good compromise. But that's, that's the trickiest part of the whole, the whole trail. There is, the other tricky part is getting from Havrell Street into Ipswich River Park. The rail bed itself runs through North Redding Autobody. There, it's not as hard as where the Riverwood is. There are possibilities of running it in the wetland, right along the river. It would be more complicated. It would be a lot easier if we could, if we could secure an easement on his property, but there are, there are ways around it there. Beyond that, they've, they've come up with some, some good solutions to get, to run the trail out to Route 28, you know, potentially connecting to whatever you do with that, that area by Ocean State Job Lots. And I heard you talking earlier about the potential waste treatment plant, and I don't know, I don't know if that's still in the mix, that, that there may be a way of combining the work on the rail trail with the, with the digging up of the, of the area there for the, for the waste treatment plant. The rail trail would essentially run right on top of the waste treatment pipe, which might be efficient use of the, of resources.
So, Madam Chair, there really wasn't a need for any action on the board's part. We just wanted the board and the community to be aware. These conversations will be taking place, these residents will be contacted to further explore the feasibility of the route, and when the timing is appropriate, there'll be a larger informational meeting. So, really, that was all. And like I said, we'll be in touch with regard to a conversation with town council.
Mr. Schultz.
I'd like to say publicly, Mr. Hertz, I've worked with you for a while on this, and you've isolated, I mean, I've come in here with this room with you, and you've laid out map after map on these tables.
We've worn now.
You've done, I just want to say publicly, and thank you, you've done, I don't know how many hundreds of hours you've put into this. And when I say, when Michael says you've basically been the driving force, you have been. And we just, I thank you.
Well, and I appreciate your, your support, too. We wouldn't happen, and if we can get through this, then, then there's a bigger, there's a bigger question that'll come to the town, you know, at the end of this. So, thank you.
Just to say, I mean, you've had our support, previous board, and town meeting support, more importantly.
Right, right.
More importantly, we've had town meeting support to come up with the initial funds to, to do this study, hire the consultant, and that's been key. But again, you have been the driving force, and it's greatly appreciated, and keep going, please, because...
Yes.
No, I, I, it's great. It's fun, and it's...
It's going to be a tremendous asset.
It's an exciting, it would be an exciting addition to the town, yeah.
The Daniels-McKnight, the open space and recreation activity, I'm on that board too, and they did a whole series of questions in this, in this room a week or so ago, and the trail and having more access to trails was, is number one on what's coming out of, out of that project, too. So I think it fits. Timing's right.
Yeah. We appreciate it.
All right. I'll be back.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Walner.
Way back when Phil and I originally talked about this, Phil took me for a ride on the trails, and it's a hidden secret that people just don't even know about. And when you go on the trails, it's really quite amazing how good this is, and how if we connect the dots and get through a few of these properties, what a great amenity it'll be for the town. I mean, it's just outstanding, so.
And Linfield's coming along. There were problems with the water district in Linfield, where they didn't want anybody on the land, but Linfield has, they've turned over the management of that water district, and I think by the time we're, we're ready, I don't think there'd be, there's going to be much problem in connecting into the Linfield land and into...
Which was a hurdle also.
Right.
Which means you could connect the Newbury Port.
We could connect Newbury Port, and we...
Like that whole bike trail's all connected.
Oh, Newbury Port, we would connect into, eventually into the one that, Linfield's building that would head down towards Boston. It'll go all the way to Salem. They're building a bridge over Route 1, PBD's building a bridge over Route 1. So, you know, 10 years from now, this'll, this'll be quite something.
We won't need cars anymore.
The fittest town in the area.
Is there a website or a location at which people were interested in reviewing the work that you've done? Can see that or review that? I know you always give people your number, just say, call me, and I'll...
I think once the, once this is done, that'll be logical. I think, right now, it's a little sensitive, because we have to get out there and tell the abutters. I mean, we've got to figure out how do we approach Linda Smith. I mean, if, if we can't figure out how to get it across Park Street, we have a, we have a, you know, you can't, you lose a third of the trail. You lose all the connectivity. So I think once we have a pretty good direction and know how that'll work, then, then, yeah, we have to put it all out there, and everybody has to see it.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Phil. Nice to see you.
Wise of you coming in early. Good for you.
He saw a break.
I waited for you to get through all of the licenses.
And you rode your bike here, right?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to pick this up?
Well, oh, sure.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of following names for reappointment as process serving constables, for terms to expire on December 31, 2020. There's five openings. We have three incumbents, and that's it. John Fiorello, Douglas Lab, and David Rosati.
Second.
Okay, well, I have a motion and a second, and our liaison just stepped out, so we're just going to assume she's going to recommend the three for five, right? Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Lab, and Mr. Rosati.
Mr. Walner.
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Lab, and Mr. Rosati.
Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Lab, and Mr. Rosati.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Lab, and Mr. Rosati.
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Lab, and Mr. Rosati. Second by, yes, okay, great.
All right, we assumed you as the liaison. We're going to recommend those three for the five openings. Yes, absolutely.
As far as the two other incumbents, they just didn't reply?
They, yeah, they, they chose not to, yeah.
Mrs. George.
Derocher and Paul Dorsey?
Both declined to, for a reappointment.
Madam Chair, I move to place and nomination the following names for appointment, reappointment to the Library Trustees for the following terms. Three openings for a term to expire December 31, 2022. Catherine Giuffran Scannell, who is an incumbent, Janet Murphy, Merco Mesa, Deborah Mahoney, Suresh Rayo, Jennifer Streisel Thompson, and Carrie Antonucci. As liaison...
I'll second.
That's a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. This is for three openings.
There's also a term to expire December 31, 2020, because of somebody stepping down. That has to be filled. Janet Murphy, Merco Mesa, Deborah Mahoney, Suresh Rayo, Jennifer Streisel Thompson, and Carrie Antonucci. So as liaison, I am recommending Catherine Giuffran Scannell is the incumbent and wants to stay. Janet Murphy, Jennifer Streisel Thompson.
So that's three, Ms. Gonzalez?
Is the three for terms to expire December 31, 2022. For the term to expire December 31, 2020, I am recommending Deborah Mahoney. And the board also is.
Okay.
So the Chair of the Trustees also recommends?
No, I'm sorry. That is not right. Is that right?
Yes, you, yes. The first three names you are recommending out of the list are for the 2022 term. The fourth name is to fill the term that's...
That's not right. Can, can I come back to this? I have to. That's not right.
So this is the 2020? All right, that's all right. Excuse, brief moment to the board. So, but is she serving to both? Is she nominating? No, okay. Mr. Gilberto?
I'm going to try to assist, although I was not part of the conversation, but my understanding after Mrs. Gonzalez and Ms. Marlin reviewed the records, that the intention was to nominate Ms. Giuffran Scannell and Ms. Murphy for the term to expire December 31, 2022, and that Ms. Streisel Thompson would be nominated for the term to expire December 31, 2020, for a total of three appointments.
Correct.
Two ending in 2022, and one ending in 2020.
Thank you.
And I believe that the intention was to not appoint associate members at this time.
Yes.
But perhaps in the future.
Correct.
I'll second the motion.
So the recommendation is for Catherine Scannell, Scannell, and Janet Murphy, and then Jennifer Thompson for the 2020.
So we're leaving one vacancy for a full term?
No.
This would fill all of the seats.
They'll all be filled, we just won't have associates. Those are the full terms.
There's two for the full. There's two for 2022, and one for a year.
Correct.
For a total of three.
She's finishing a term.
Yeah, okay. Got that? No, but, you know, it's a name roll call vote, so any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
For a term to expire December 31, 2022, Catherine Giuffran Scannell, Janet Murphy. For a term to expire December 31, 2020, Jennifer Streisel Thompson.
Correct.
For a term to expire December 31, 2022, Catherine Scannell, Janet Murphy. And for a term to expire December 31, 2020, Jennifer Streisel Thompson.
Mr. Schultz?
For a term to expire December 31, 2022, Catherine Giuffran Scannell and Janet Murphy. And for the term to expire at 12:31:20, it would be Jennifer Streisel Thompson.
Ms. Gonzalez?
For the term to expire December 31, 2022, Catherine Giuffran Scannell and Janet Murphy. For the term to expire December 31, 2020, Jennifer Streisel Thompson.
And I'll vote for a term to expire December 31, 2022, Catherine Scannell and Janet Murphy. For a term to expire December 31, 2020, Jennifer Streisel Thompson. These aren't supposed to be complicated. All right, so Library Trustees are squared away. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
So, so just, just as a question, so as far as associate members who come back later on?
Correct.
Madam Chair, I move to place and nomination the following names for appointment as members of the Veterans Event Committee for terms to expire December 31, 2022. Richard Stratton, incumbent, Arthur Cole, incumbent, Michelle Reed, and Daniel Mahoney.
Second.
I, thank you.
I have a motion and a second, and... I have a motion and a second, and I.
I am liaison.
Yes.
I am recommending Richard Stratton and Arthur Cole would like to continue on. I believe those are the only two. It doesn't say here, but I believe those are the only two openings.
Mr. Gilberto?
Mr. Gilberto.
We're confirming that right now. Yes, that's correct.
Correct.
What is correct?
Two openings.
Two openings, and I am, they would like to stay on, and I am recommending that.
Okay, Richard Stratton and Arthur Cole. All right, so, I have any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Richard Stratton, Arthur Cole.
Mr. Walner?
Richard Stratton, Arthur Cole.
Ms. Schultz?
Mr. Stratton and Mr. Cole.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Richard Stratton, Arthur Cole.
And I go Richard Stratton and Arthur Cole. How many members are on that committee, Mr. Gilberto?
I believe it was reduced to seven from a high of 11, but I'd have to go online to confirm that. We recently reduced it, though, within the past two years.
So, they could meet, have a quorum?
Right, they had a challenge with a, a quorum.
So, but if, if it was just reduced for that purpose, and we have two individuals who want to serve on it, we should take that up at another point and expand the committee with these two new people.
Or at least as associate members and.
Yes, yeah, because they want to serve on that. I think it's important that, that when people do step forward, we give them a chance. Not just the incumbents, but newer people that want to, want to start serving on these committees should, should have a chance to fulfill the role, especially if there's an expanded capability for membership. Take a minute?
This is, yeah, it's another.
Just to take a quick, quick minute. Quick minute. Stretch your legs.
So, this is.
Do you have caffeine?
How about you, cinnamon chip?
Pour our cough drops for dinner.
I mean, I don't see why not. Yes. I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
One in doubt?
Yeah, exactly.
There's no financial gain to it, but you might as well, just to avoid any issue, you know?
Okay, I'm ready. Madam Chair, I move to reappoint to the Youth Services Committee the following individuals for the terms noted. Three-year terms to expire December 31, 2022. Peter Mahane. Incumbent. Samantha Miller, incumbent. Leslie Schultz, incumbent. Christie Damp House, incumbent. One-year term to expire December 31, 2020. Frank Ferraro, incumbent. Karen Buscemi, incumbent. And Deborah Mahoney has been recommended by the board, and I will recommend her myself.
So, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And then let's hear from the liaison. Oh, Mr. Schultz.
Since one of the candidates also doubles as Mrs. Schultz, I'm going to recuse myself from this particular vote.
All right. And Kim, we'll, we'll hear from the liaison on recommendation.
Oh, I, I recommend all the incumbents who wish to stay, and Deborah Mahoney, who has been recommended by the board, and I will recommend her myself.
So, where, where is her name? I'm sorry.
So, she had, she just got added on at the last minute.
Is, which term?
A one-year term.
Deborah Mahoney?
2020?
2020.
And this is room for everybody?
Yes, there was an open seat.
Correct.
All right.
You need a second? Second.
Oh, I thought we had a second.
Yeah, we had a second, that's okay.
You had one?
So, now it's a, a roll call.
So, Mr. O'Leary?
For a three-year term to expire December 31, 2022, Peter Mahane, Samantha Miller, Leslie Schultz, Christie Dampfus. And then for a one-year term to expire December 31, 2020, Frank Ferraro, Karen Buscemi, and Deborah Mahoney.
Mr. Walner?
Three-year term for 2020, 2022, excuse me, Peter Mahane, Samantha Miller, Leslie Schultz, Christie Dampfus. And for the one-year term for 2020, Frank Ferraro, Karen Buscemi, Deborah Mahoney.
And Ms. Gonzalez?
For the 2022 term, Peter Mahane, Samantha, Samantha Miller, Leslie Schultz, Christie Dampfus. One-year term, 2020, Frank Ferraro, Karen Buscemi, and Deborah Mahoney.
And I'll vote for the term to expire December 31, 2022, Peter Mahane, Samantha Miller, Leslie Schultz, and Christie Dampfus. And for a term to expire December 31, 2020, Frank Ferraro, Karen Buscemi, and Deborah Mahoney.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Richard Stratton as member to the Veterans Memorial Committee for an indefinite term.
Yes. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, this is an easy one. All right, are you going to recommend?
I, um, yes. Mr. Stratton approached me with an interest, and there was an opening, so I, I highly recommend him.
Great. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Stratton.
Mr. Walner?
Mr. Stratton.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Stratton.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Mr. Stratton.
And Mr. Stratton.
She texted me, thank you. Are you the Youth Services Liaison?
No, no.
Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following names for appointment, reappointment as member of the Conservation Commission for terms to expire December 31, 2022. One opening. Melissa Campbell, incumbent. Michael Hoo, Chris Lippert, Suresh Rayo, Erin Matt Daniels, David Doucette, James Chaney, Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz, John Lake, and Lauren Bishara.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And Mr. O'Leary, as the liaison?
I would recommend Melissa Campbell. She was appointed a year or two ago, and again, as part of the town administrator's report, you will hear that Melissa has continued her education and certification as a member of the Conservation Commission and is serving well, and I would highly recommend Melissa Campbell.
Okay, any other discussion? On the roll call name vote, Mr. O'Leary?
Melissa Campbell.
Mr. Walner?
Melissa Campbell.
Mr. Schultz?
Melissa Campbell.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Melissa Campbell.
And I'll vote Melissa Campbell.
Plus, it's my maiden name, so I was a fan. It's my maiden name, so.
Melissa?
Campbell. Melissa.
Interesting name. Again, Melissa.
Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following names for appointment, reappointment as associate members of the Conservation Commission for terms to expire December 31, 2022. Three openings. John Lake, incumbent. Lauren Bishara, incumbent. Michael Hoo, Chris Lippert, Suresh Rayo, Erin Matt Daniels, David Doucette, and James Chaney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. And Mr. O'Leary is the liaison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would respectfully request that my colleagues only fill two of the openings at this particular point in time. My recommendation would be the two incumbents. As a result of some of the mix-up over the last month or so, consultation with the Chair of the Conservation Commission, we have been unable to contact everybody who's looking for, seeking some appointment as an associate member here. We'd like that opportunity, so we'll be back at a later date recommending the filling of the third slot, because we haven't talked to everybody.
Ms. Gonzalez, you had to hand up.
I noticed that Elizabeth Coolidge-Stolz was on the first one, but she's not on the associate. Is there a reason for that?
And she will be included on the, as far, as far as discussions and contact, yep. So, so that, that's why, again, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, nor myself, have been able to contact everybody in the short period of time that we've gotten these citizens' activity reports. So, we would ask that you leave the one associate slot open at this particular point in time with the intent of filling it shortly.
I'm, I'm in favor of that if we do fill it shortly. We usually go along with the liaison recommendations anyway, so.
Well, if you recall, you know, last year, we put the call up because we didn't have anybody, and we had a need for.
Yes.
Full membership on the Conservation Commission, and we had a bevy of activity, which was terrific.
Yes.
And then we have a significant amount of interest, and we'd like to continue backfilling. Just as a way of information to the board, I would anticipate that we're probably going to have another resignation at the end of January of a current Conservation Commission member, the end of January, so that we'll be looking to fill a full membership, probably end of January, beginning of February, and then backfilling again another associate member slot. So, we have a very active associate membership at this point, which is terrific, so that they can step right in and be right up to speed. And so, that will actually create a second associate member slot if we promote from within. So, that's just an FYI. So, again, I would recommend at this particular point, just fill in two of the three spots. And my recommendation would be John Lake and Lauren Bishara.
Okay, Mr. O'Leary?
John Lake, Lauren Bishara.
Mr. Walner?
John Lake, Lauren Bishara.
Mr. Schultz?
John Lake, Lauren Bishara.
Ms. Gonzalez?
John Lake, Lauren Bishara.
Yeah, John Lake and Lauren Bishara.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Hillview Commission for a term to expire on December 31, 2022. Two openings. Peter Hem, incumbent. Daniel Daugherty, incumbent. Daniella Claiborne, David Lee, Chris Lippert, Nicholas Massey, Henry Burr. Forgive me for any mispronunciations here.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and we'll hear from the liaison. Mr. Le, Mr. O'Leary?
Madam Chair, I would recommend to my colleagues, again, Peter Hemmy and Daniel Daugherty, both the incumbents of the Hillview Commission. As you are aware, the Hillview Commission is vital in relation to the success of the operation. Mr. Hemmy is the current treasurer, CPA, and has been lending his expertise for a number of years. Mr. Daugherty is in the food business, and again, lends a significant amount of expertise to the commission in relation to the ongoing operations there. And I think it would be incumbent upon us to reappoint the incumbents. Mr. Hemmy and Mr. Daugherty.
Incumbent, the incumbents?
It's incumbent upon us to.
Thank you, cough.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. And Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Hemmy and Mr. Daugherty.
Mr. Walner?
Peter Hemmy and Daniel Daugherty.
Mr. Schultz?
Uh, Mr. Hemmy and Mr. Daugherty.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Peter Hemmy, Daniel Daugherty.
And I'll vote Peter Hemmy and Daniel Daugherty.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following names for reappointment, appointment as member of the Water Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2022. Two openings. I'm going to do my best with these names. Amit Subramani, incumbent.
Zu Yang Zhang.
Zu Yang Zhang.
So, another easy one, but I have both of you listed as our liaison, so.
I actually spoke with Mr. Raguchi, who is the Chair, and he also indicated that there's a couple of associate positions as well. If anyone out there is interested in joining the Water Commission, they, we'd love to get some more people on here.
That's great. All right, so.
I'm recommending both of these gentlemen.
Yes.
Two for two. All right, thank you. Mr. O'Leary?
Amit Subrami and Zhu Yang Zhang.
And Mr. Walner?
Amit Subrami and Yang Zhang.
Mr. Schultz?
Amit Subrami and Zu Yang Zhang.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Amit Subrami and Yu Yang Zhang.
And I'll vote Amit Subramani and Zu Yang Zhang.
And finally.
Are you sure?
We have a few more here, so what else do you have? You said finally? I have a vote.
Are we missing any?
The Board of Appeals?
I have, there should be an 11th page of the motions relative to the Board of Appeals, yep. Is there not a motion then?
Is there anything with Cultural Council?
We never, we didn't.
We didn't have any other?
I, I don't believe that there were any others that were pending for appointment, ready for appointment, reappointment at this point in time.
Okay, sure we're not.
Other than the Board of Appeals.
All right. Sorry about that.
Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following names for reappointment, appointment as members of the Board of Appeals for our terms to expire December 31, 2022. Two openings. James Dimitri, incumbent. Paul O'Leary, incumbent. Carrie Antonucci, Antonuccio, and Bob Green.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Schultz, and we'll hear from Mr. Schultz as liaison.
Uh, we have some great candidates here. Mr. Dimitri's a longtime member, current Chair, is handling the 40B hearings right now with the Elm Street property. Mr. O'Leary, another longtime member. We thank him for his service as well. Uh, Ms. DeBreen, who's eminently qualified, he's an attorney, he owns no commercial property. He's argued appellate cases in the U.S. Appeals District Court, the Supreme Judicial Court, and the Mass Appellate Court. He's litigated in the Superior District and probate and housing courts. And Ms. Antonuccio, who applied as well, I thank you, thank all of you for your applications. And I'm going to nominate Mr. Dimitri and Mr. DeBreen.
All right. So, on a roll call name vote, Mr. O'Leary?
Just as a way of comment, just, first of all, to state that, you know, my brother Paul O'Leary is an incumbent, 28-year veteran of the Board of Appeals. There is no inherent conflict, only because it's a non-paying position, so that I will be participating. It's somewhat unusual that if there's going to be a recommendation of not recommending an incumbent, that there hasn't been any communication, at least there hasn't been any communication with this member of the board from the liaison. Unless there's some compelling reason as to not to reappoint incumbents, I mean, I certainly would recommend and have in the past, over the years, reappointing the incumbents. So, I will be supporting Mr. Dimitri and Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. O'Leary, that's your na, roll, your name vote?
Mr. Dimitri and Mr. O'Leary.
All right. Mr. Walner?
Can I just understand the difference between the incumbent and the, from the liaison, and between your recommendation and the incumbent, why, why you're?
What was the recommendation of the Chair?
I spoke with the Chair. I didn't ask for his recommendation. I know he has a personal relationship with one of the members on the board. I've recommended who I thought was best for the position.
Madam Chair, again.
There's no lifetime, I'm sorry, I just interrupted. One thing I am concerned about in this board is the appearance of the, of being lifetime appointments on these chairs. And I think, frankly, I think these boards should have term limits on them. And I just think Mr. DeBreen's more qualified. That's all.
Just generally speaking, our policy calls for liaisons to confer with the Chair of the various committees, discuss the needs of the committee and candidates that have applied, and who would best serve. applied, and who would best serve. So it's unusual if we didn't have a discussion with the Chair, with Mr. Dimitri at the time, currently, and asked for his recommendation as to what the current needs for the Board of Appeals are.
I had a discussion with him.
And did he make a recommendation to you?
No, he did not.
It would be, again, unusual.
There's no rule.
Yeah, no, I'm not familiar with that, but since I've been on the Board, it's certainly, it's only been for the past four years. It's basically you, you adhere to what the liaison, that's how it's been since I've been here, you adhere to what the liaison.
Liaison, but liaison generally confers with the Chair.
You adhere to what the liaison recommends, and it's a board appointment, so it would be up to the Board to decide, and it's also five members, so you, you know, that's, you don't necessarily have to go along with the liaison recommendation, but, you know, that's typically how it's been done since I've been here.
But, but again, the policy calls for liaisons for reappointment, again, when it comes to appointments and reappointments, to confer with the Chair of the various Boards, Committees, and Commissions, to talk about, because those are the people who are on a weekly, monthly basis, are dealing with the issues that come before them, to talk about the needs and the desires and the wants and the talents of the, and the abilities of the people who are either serving or look to serve, and to ignore that isn't, isn't right either. Again, you can disagree, but again, there has been times in the past when liaisons have disagreed with the Chair's recommendations, but those recommendations have been shared with the Board prior to any vote. What we're seeing here tonight is the non-sharing of a recommendation from the Chair of a Board, so that we can make an informed decision rather than just relying on the liaison's recommendations. Again, everything I did tonight, well, with everybody else up to this point, has been a consultation with the Chair. This is who has been recommended, and why. So, if we're going to deviate from that.
Well, there's no policy that I'm aware of that you're referring to.
I don't, let's not, I don't, I don't want to get into, if we could all just take, everyone has, Mr. Wallner had a question about what's the difference between incumbent and liaison recommendations, so that's what we're trying to answer. I'm not familiar with anyone telling in advance their recommendation, other than at the open meeting.
And that's just going to be, again, I've been sitting here for close to 30 years, and again, I don't recall ever being surprised by a recommendation of a non-incumbent without being informed first, and having it sprung upon us at the last minute. And I had known that it informed, that there hasn't been consultation between the liaison and the Chairman as to Chairman's recommendations, and I have sat here and seen two different recommendations, and the opportunity for the Chairman to come and make a presentation to the rest of the members of the Board as to, you know, their recommendation versus the liaison's recommendation. And this isn't happening this evening.
Well, I don't think it's up to the Chair of the Board, I think it's a decision of the Board to appoint.
No, 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 but in order for all of us, again, we have liaison assignments because we can't be in all places at all time with all Boards, Committees, and Commissions. But we have a right, as each and every member here has a right, to be informed as to what the recommendation of the Chairman of the, current Chairman of a Board, Committee, and Commission is going to be as far as who's going to be seated on the Board, Committee, and Commission. 99% of the time, or 99.9% of the time, it's in concert with the liaison. When there's a conflict, we should know, should be aware, and know what the rationale is why. And again, if the Board, Committee, and Commission Chair respectfully disagrees with the liaison, the other members of this Board should be informed as to why the Board Chair would recommend somebody other than what the liaison is, an incumbent in particular, or if there's a vacancy, why this person as opposed to that person. And we're not being afforded that opportunity.
Ultimately, so ultimately, Mr. O'Leary, the Board votes, I did experience this when I first came on the Board, and it had, actually had to do with Youth Services, but again, it's a liaison recommendation, so.
People don't have to agree with me.
Well, no, it's not a disagreement. It's a roll call name vote, so. So, Mr. O'Leary, you did take a vote.
Again, I would recommend if.
So we're, we're in the middle of a vote, Mr. O'Leary, so your vote.
Well, no, we were going to comment, I was commenting, you're asking what my vote was going to be, I, you know, I'm in the comment period now, is there any discussion? This is discussion. My discussion was, again, that this is unusual, and it's somewhat unprecedented. So my suggestion to my colleagues are, unless and until we get a recommendation from, again, I don't know what the recommendation is of the Chair of the Board of Appeals right now to this Board as to who should be appointed, unless until we get that, we should hold off on it. And again, get Mr. Dimitri's input, so that we can all make an informed decision as to whether or not we should go along with the liaison's recommendation.
But we did hear from the liaison who did speak with him, but he didn't make a recommendation.
He didn't ask him for a recommendation.
There's no rule saying I have to. The, the Chairman of the ZVA is close friends with one of the members on the Board. I don't want to put him in a spot where he's, I made a recommendation, people don't have to vote with me, let's take a vote, that's what we're here for.
I would say that there would be, again, we have some pretty important things before the Board of Appeals right now, 40B not being the smallest one, but there are other matters, and again, you have an incumbent here who's got 28 years of experience of, in chairing it for most of that period of time, and you're not recommending that individual, and you didn't have the courtesy, for whatever reason, to ask the Chair to make a recommendation to this Board along with your own. Again, it may be a conflict, it may be different, but it would be incumbent upon us, again, not just this one here, but I mean, it's anyone. Again, when I gave you my recommendations, I consulted with the Chairs of all my Boards, Committees, and Commissions, and asked them, and happened to be in concert with all of them. Again, in years past, there has been some disagreements, but those disagreements have been presented right up front to the Board members to make an informed decision. We haven't been afforded that, that opportunity tonight.
You have every information you need to make a vote right now, you've made your vote.
No, I do not, because I have not heard from Mr. Dimitri.
Is it going to change your vote? You're not going to vote for your brother?
It has nothing to do with that.
Well.
All right, let's, let's bring it to order. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Madam Chair, I move to table the appointment of Board of Appeals, until we get a recommendation from the Chair of the Board of Appeals.
So, but we have a motion and a second on the.
Motion to, motion to table prevails at this particular time. Go to Robinson's of Order.
Okay, so I have a motion to table.
Until we get a recommendation from the.
And a motion on the floor. And a motion on the floor.
To nominate, can I, motion to table.
And is there a second to that motion?
I, I just have more discussion, I guess.
On.
Well, there's a motion to table right now. Is there a second on that?
Yeah, we don't.
Sorry.
Okay, so we have no second, so the motion to table fails, so, Mr. Wallner, what's your point?
I, I think that we're all in agreement about Jim Dimitri, who is the Chair, that we should, we should go through the name roll call for that. But I also think that whether the Chair decides to comment or not, being in a position where I don't know the background of any of these people, and I do give a lot of weight to people who have historically done the job, it doesn't mean that they should be continuing on, because I don't know the dynamics, but I would like to know what the background of the people who have applied for this, if we're going to be put in that position of having a second. And so, I would like more background.
It's in your meeting pack.
Just one at a time, please, please.
So I'm, I'm proposing now, we, you know, we affirm Jim Dimitri, and that we table the other ones until we understand how Jim feels, and that Mr. Dimitri feels, and also that, that we also get background information on the, the discussion. I don't know if that's even possible, but I think that makes sense.
Sure, it's possible, again, we didn't fill the other one.
So that, excuse me, one minute, please.
That'll give us a chance to think about it.
Sure. Mr. Gilbert, oh, this'll clear up any confusion, right?
I, I guess, so I have a text message I received from Mr. Dimitri stating that he did, that he talked, that he was, was recommending Paul O'Leary, that's what he's saying, so. I can read it, he said.
No, that, that's, so, so we've heard.
He said he's recommending Paul.
So this, there really is no need to table, obviously, because he's, he's waiting.
I told, he says he told Mr. Schultz he's recommending Paul.
He's watching and waiting, so the Chair is.
So again, Mr. Dimitri stated to the Town Administrator that he's, he recommended to his liaison, Mr. O'Leary.
Okay, so, so again.
Liaison said he didn't get a recommendation from the Chair, which isn't, isn't true. Is that true? Did he tell you he was recommending Paul O'Leary?
No, it didn't come up.
He didn't tell you that?
I just answered you.
So.
I didn't ask the question.
So what's, but did he offer?
I don't recall that, no, I don't recall that. But we know what his recommendation is, so now we can vote.
Okay.
No, no, part of the problem here is, Mr. Dimitri has just texted the Town Administrator and said that he had a discussion with our liaison, and said that he was recommending Paul O'Leary. Our liaison is saying he didn't have the discussion with the Chair, and that Mr. Dimitri did not recommend.
No, I did have.
No, you know what? No, 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 that's not what he said. He said he didn't, he said he did not ask him for a recommendation, that was pretty clear.
He told me Paul himself were seeking reappointment. That was pretty much the tenor of our conversation, and I complimented him, I always handled the 40B procedure so far. That was, the whole gist of our conversation was, it was not that long.
Okay, so we have, okay, so now we have a situation that Mr. O'Leary explained, where we have the liaison recommendation, which is for Mr. Dimitri and Mr. Br, is it, Mr. DeBreen? And a, a difference of the Chair, obviously assuming he's recommending himself, and Mr. O'Leary. So, so now, we don't need to table, because we've heard from, via text, and.
I've also received a text from Jim, who said that he did talk to Andy two weeks ago and recommended Paul. Just telling you what he just told me, and you can read what I just, he just sent me in text saying this, so.
And he's tried to call my number too, but I couldn't pick up the phone while I'm in a meeting. I did speak with Mr. Dimitri.
So, I, I think, I think Mr. Wallner's suggestion would be a good compromise at this point, which is to appoint Mr. Dimitri this evening, and at next meeting, have Mr. Dimitri come in here and make his case, if Mr. O'Leary wants to come, and Mr. DeBreen wants to come, and we can interview the candidates and.
Since when have we ever done that?
Well, since this is the first time that this has occurred, never.
Okay, well, I think we're ready to, we have a motion.
Apparently, you've decided not to circumvent the system the way that it's worked, but.
Steve, you're out of order.
I'm out of order?
You're out of order, per excusing me of something.
All right, let's, let's stop, let's stop this. So, I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what your motion is, Mr. Wallner, your motion is to table and appoint, so that's what I think the, I think the motion came across. We've had a motion to table to vote, that motion failed, but now you're basically asserting a motion to, to.
Firm Jim.
Appoint and table, so.
And then, yes.
One appointment.
Okay, so.
One appointment and table the second.
So, do I, so, so I have a motion to appoint and table, I guess is what we'll call that one. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to appoint and table, and a second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. What do we, what do, what's your vote, Ms. Gonzalez? So, three in favor of appointing?
You were favor of appointing and table, or no?
I'm confused. Can we repeat that whole?
Oh, because you're writing it down.
Yeah, I was trying to write the motion down.
Mr. Wallner made a motion to.
To appoint Mr. Dimitri.
Appoint one position, the current Chair, and to table the appointment of the second open position for.
Reconsideration in the future when we have more information.
For our next meeting.
Because there's, there's disagreement between the liaison and the Chair, even about the circumstances that have occurred, so I'm hearing.
Okay, so, Mr. O'Leary seconded that motion. So, Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Wallner voted in favor of the motion to split the vote, table and vote, and Mr. Schultz and I voted against that vote, so you're the only one left. I don't know what you voted, I couldn't hear you.
I didn't, I was writing, so I didn't even understand, I was trying to understand.
It's a good one, I hope Jane, you got all of that, too.
I know, poor Jane. So, no, I, I think we should take the vote.
So, you are not voting in favor of that motion?
Of that motion.
Okay, so that, okay, so that motion is, fails, fails.
Three to two.
Three to two. Okay, so now we're going to take, okay, I don't know what we're doing now, so.
So now we're going to.
I'll wait for another motion.
Well, there's a mo, there's a roll call, there's a motion for a roll call vote.
Okay, so we're reverting back to the original motion. So now, the original motion to appoint two positions to two openings, there's four candidates. Mr. Dimitri presumably recommends himself and Mr. O'Leary. The liaison is recommending Mr. DeBreen and Mr. Dimitri. Okay, so this is a roll call name vote. Mr. O'Leary.
Is there a discussion?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, yes, was there a second to that, actually? There was a second to that motion? Yes, yeah. Mr. Wallner.
Mr. Dimitri is informing me that, again, that there's, there's a misunderstanding of the representation that Mr. Schultz has said, that there was no conversation, in fact, there was a conversation that occurred two weeks ago, and he's pretty much informing he'll be resigning if this follows through as the plan is right now.
So Mr. Dimitri's taken his name out.
If this is basically how we're going to operate, he's going to be resigning from his position.
Okay, so, so he's.
Take your vote.
Yeah. Can I make a comment? Again, for the record, I spoke with Mr. Dimitri, okay? We may disagree on the tenor of the conversation, I never said I didn't speak with him. If the ZVA is going to resign over one person not being reappointed, let him resign, okay? They tried that playbook about three, four years ago, and this Board should have accepted it when they did it. That's not how we operate, we don't get bullied into reappointing people. These are not appointments for life. If people are going to resign, they can resign, okay? I recommend Mr. Dimitri for reappointment, I think he's done a fine job with the 40B, I think he's a fine member of the Board. I think Mr. O'Leary has been a longtime member, I thank him for his service. I just happen to find there's someone more qualified. And if people are going to resign because they don't get their own way, I'm not going to be bullying and voting for somebody because they may resign. So if he wants to resign, he can resign.
So you have four names, is it one, two?
I'm going to recommend Mr. Dimitri and Mr. DeBreen, and if Mr. Dimitri decides to resign, we will find someone else to fill that position.
So if Mr. Dimitri is, is informing through text that he's going to with.
Well, you have to wait, vote the way you got to vote.
Yeah.
Just, people don't have to agree with.
People don't have to agree with. Yeah, I'm not going to be bullied into a vote, though, I mean, it's ridiculous.
Okay. But, again. It is a little surprising that you're being texted in real time by the person that's steering the board.
I think the point that's been made here, Mr. Schultz just pointed out, you know, if this is the way we're going to operate, you know, that he's not going to be bullied by members of the Board of Appeals or any Chairman or anybody else, that's fine. But I think Mr. Dimitri's texting Mr. Wallner, it's quite clear, too, if this is the way we're going to operate.
Right.
They're not going to participate. And again, the way that this has been handled is very unorthodox and unusual, and to my recollection, I don't ever recall it occurring this way. As I stated earlier, if there was going to be a recommendation different than the Chair of a Board, Committee, and Commission, it's been stated right up front, it's been known up front, it's been shared, and then each member of this Board has been, had the opportunity to confer and then make an informed decision, and nobody was surprised by a motion or a recommendation that was made at the night of the meeting. And this is what's occurred this evening. So, you know, to Mr. Dimitri's credit, and I have no doubt that what he said to Mr. Wallner is true, that's a choice that he has to make along with other members of the, of the Board of Appeals. But that's unfortunate, because what's driving the wedge between this Board and our appointees is the way this has been handled. It's not necessarily the recommendation. Yeah, Mr. Schultz has every right to make a recommendation that he thinks is in the Mr. Schultz has every right to make a recommendation that he thinks is in the best interest of the Board and our appointing authority, but it's been mishandled, and that's unfortunate. And these people are volunteers. You get someone who's a 28-year incumbent, who has not been informed by the liaison. Whenever I recommended someone other than incumbent, no incumbent was ever surprised by my recommendation. I informed them upfront that I was not gonna be recommending them. I have a question to you. Did you tell Mr. O'Leary that you were not gonna recommend him? Did you tell him that?
No, I did not.
You did not?
Nor...
Well, okay, so you wonder why people are surprised. No, you're obligated to.
Nor am I obligated to.
These are volunteers. Every time that I talk to somebody who's a... Who's an incumbent, and if I'm not gonna recommend them... There have been times when I have not recommended an incumbent. I had given them the opportunity to either have their name considered or withdrawn with the knowledge that I'm not gonna recommend them. That courtesy wasn't even afforded to this individual, and that's unfortunate.
How can I recommend it?
That's unfortunate and cowardly. Why wouldn't you not tell them?
Okay, that...
You know, but again, that...
You know what? We're not...
No, no, this is what this Board needs to be informed as to how this was handled or mishandled. You know, we're gonna be a party to it without making an informed decision with all the information that's available. And again, I'm appalled.
That's fine.
I know, I'm appalled.
I'm appalled at the accusations you're making against me. I spoke with the Chair. I need to speak. I need to speak.
I'm appalled by the fact that we have not...
That's enough.
What do you mean? I'm appalled by the fact that you didn't have the courtesy...
Your office is your brother.
I don't care if it was my sister or it was your brother.
No, you care because it's your brother.
It's wrong.
You care because it's your brother.
Okay, that's enough.
No, it is not true. It is not true. Every incumbent, every incumbent and every applicant that is putting on it should have the opportunity to know whether they're not gonna be recommended or not.
That's enough.
What do you mean it's enough? No, what's enough is the way that this has been mishandled.
Can I just jump in for a second? Mr. Dmitri has communicated with me one more time. If he had any idea that his recommendation was not gonna be followed, he would have been here tonight to discuss it in person. He was not given that opportunity because he didn't know there was gonna be a change of course of the recommendation. Again, I am suggesting that we table this until we can have a proper hearing, because it is a process problem, and we're not handling this professionally, in my opinion. This is not how you handle volunteers. This is not how you communicate, and the Chair and the...
You didn't even call your people. You didn't even call your people early tonight.
All right, Mr. Schultz, Mr. Schultz, one, one person at a time.
It's ridiculous. You didn't beat up there for something that I did right there?
You didn't beat up on what you didn't do and what you did do.
Okay, can I speak?
I'm just saying we should punt. I'm saying we should punt.
Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Wallner...
I'm just saying we should...
We're not gonna insult one another. We have the facts here. We have the recommendation. We have Mr. Dmitri's, I guess, statement of resignation, I'm not sure. So, that's what he wants. He wants to continue serving with Mr. O'Leary. He's made that clear. So, that is very clear. Those are the facts. We're not getting anywhere arguing about this. We know what Mr. Dmitri wants, and if he doesn't get it, he's going to resign. That's what you're conveying, he's texting to you.
Just to clear it up, he's not... Yes, he recommended Mr. O'Leary. What he's complaining about, what he's stating is that...
He's going to resign if Mr. O'...
No, he's gonna...
That's what he said?
He is surprised at what is transpiring right now with the recommendation he's here, based on a conversation he had with his liaison two weeks ago. So that is not the impression he was left with two weeks ago. And what he's saying is, if I had known that it was gonna be a conflict of recommendation, he would have been here to speak up for his recommendation. But right now, we're only hearing from one, not the other, and unfortunately, I'm hearing it through text. So he's not saying, I'm leaving, because it's not Mr. O'Leary. He's saying, I don't agree with the process and how we're handling this, and if we're gonna play that way, he doesn't wanna play with us to do that. And that's a different... Different than what you just said.
And he'd like to be here to speak up for himself. I think for myself. This is a spectacle right now. You're creating... I need to speak with you being quiet. Are you capable of being quiet for a minute?
Mr. Schultz, Mr. Schultz, please, direct your comments this through the Chair, please.
Well, I'm being shouted down here. This is turning into a spectacle with the two gentlemen to my left. We're gonna bring in Mr. Dmitri and Mr. Paul O'Leary and make it more of a spectacle two weeks from now? No, thank you, okay? I made my recommendations. People don't have to agree with me. That's right. I'm up for reelection to make. People can vote me out if they don't like me, okay? That's why we have elections. Elections matter. Elections come with people that give votes. This is all the more reason why I stand behind my recommendations. What has just transpired for the last 15 minutes? And again, for the 10th time, I spoke with Mr. O'Leary a couple of weeks ago... Excuse me, with Mr. Dmitri and Mr. O'Leary, but with Mr. Dmitri a couple of weeks ago. He told me that both he and Paul were seeking reappointment. That was the extent of the conversation. He also asked, do you think I'll be okay? And I said, I can't discuss that over the phone, we have an open meeting, but I appreciate everything you've done with the 40B. That was the whole, whole of the conversation. It was very short, okay? Period, end of sentence, okay? I... Mr. O... Steve O'Leary is carrying the water for his brother, Paul O'Leary. That's what this is all about right now, okay? They don't like my recommendation. That's fine, you guys may not like my recommendation. There's five people, forget the vote with me. If you don't vote with me, I don't take it personal, we move on. But the personal attacks come from somebody who's been on this Board for 30 years, who claims all these policies that don't exist. They're Steve O'Leary policies, they're not Board policies. I've seen no written policies. No, I need to speak.
Stick to the facts.
I've seen no written policies, say I haven't done anything wrong. I've contacted the liaisons. I got a gentleman to the left of me here, Mr. Wallner, didn't even call his people. Maybe he didn't know he's new, okay? So I really have a hard time with what I'm dealing with right here, when I'm just trying to do the right thing. Again, I'm up for reelection. If people don't like me, pull papers and vote me out.
All right, it really has... Okay. This really has nothing to do with the elections. All it has to do with is we're appointing to the Board this evening, just like we are appointing to others. We've heard from the liaison, we've heard from the Chair, who wants a different appointment. But in my experience here with this Board, we go with the liaison recommendation. That doesn't mean that you have to vote with the liaison recommendation, and I've... Or that the liaison even has to adhere to the Chair's recommendation. I've only experienced that once, since I first started here. But other than that, we typically go with the liaison recommendation. However, it's five votes, five votes for two positions. You vote the way that you want to vote, and I don't know that there's anything else that can be added to that dialogue a week from now, a month from now, two weeks from now, whenever we next meet. There's really nothing much more we can add to this dialogue, other than our vote to appoint. And I'm not in favor of tabling something where we have an active, pretty, pretty active Board and a pretty significant matter that Mr. Dmitri... Mr. Dmitri has been carrying the pails for, for us for the whole entire time, and serving as a Chair for the whole entire time, so...
The 40B.
That would be absolutely...
Mr. Paul O'Leary took a powder on, didn't even show up. He hasn't even publicly refused himself.
All right. Let's just keep... Let's just stick to the... Stick to the business at hand here, okay? There's nothing more we can add to this dialogue unless there's anything else. Ms. Gonzalez, is there anything else that you... Anything else? Okay. So, I think I have...
I would just like to respond. First of all, I don't carry anybody's water, and my brother doesn't need his water to be carried, you know? And again, when it comes down...
I said, carry the water of the 40B.
No, 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 not you.
I don't think that's...
I said that.
He did say that.
I'll say it again.
And again...
I picked up that.
And I don't make up the policies, and it's not Steve O'Leary's policies, and again, the policies and procedures and the historical methodologies as to how this Board is operated was long before I was here and will be long after I'm gone. So I don't make them up. And again, in all the years that I've sat here, I've never seen... And I agree, it's a spectacle. A spectacle created by our liaison here by not, again, allowing the recommendation of the Chair of the Board Committee Commission to be heard by the rest of the members who have to vote, make an informed decision. Now, we've heard from the Chair that if you were provided the opportunity, and he knew that liaison's recommendation's gonna be different than his, he would have been present to inform the rest of us as to why there's a difference of opinion. And he hasn't been afforded that, and that's unfortunate. So, the spectacle that's been created here this evening is not by Mr. Dmitri, not by Mr. O'Leary, who's looking to be reappointed to 28 years, you know? It's been our liaison and how he's handled it and mishandled it. So again, I'm not carrying anybody's water for a volunteer position who's given up hundreds and hundreds of thousands of hours here. Doesn't need to be done. So, again, I would recommend that this Board handle it properly. How you choose to do it is entirely up to you.
Can I move to vote?
Okay, so we have...
So again, I just question my colleagues again.
I'm not sure what...
Is the majority still okay? Is the majority still okay with moving forward? Or do you wanna wait one more meeting?
I'd like to move to vote.
And do it right.
I'm not, I'm not sure what the...
One second.
What the vote is. Okay, so we have a move to a vote, but what was the vote?
You have the main motion. The main motion's on the floor.
Okay, there's... How many motions now do we have?
You only have one on the floor.
So the motion is to vote, to vote on the appointments. Okay, so the... The motion is to vote on the appointments, okay? That was seconded by you.
No, I think you made the motion and it's seconded.
Is it a new motion or is it the original motion?
It's the main, the original motion.
Yeah. So we're going back to what was...
That's where you are. The other ones have it seconded or have it for sale.
Right, okay. All right, so, Mr. O'Leary, on the motion, there's no further discussion.
There is there? No further discussion?
Do you have some... Do you have any further?
I just, I just, I really do not like being in this position of having to choose between two people, three people even, and not know the background. When there's, when there's disagreement from the leaders of this committee about what's going on, and I just feel like this is... I don't wanna choose between the two of them, because I wanna find the best person for this position. I don't feel like I have enough information on any of them to help do that. We have a conflict, you're asking me to vote on a name, I don't have enough information to make that decision. I don't care how we got here, I just think this is, right now, not a good situation, and I'm not very comfortable with this at all. And I really wanna table this.
Okay, so, Mr... Okay, Mr. Wallner wants to table Mr. and Mr...
Can I just...
Ms. Gonzalez, sure.
I don't know if Mr. Wallner knows that there is a citizen's activity form for Mr. Breen here, that if we could take a moment and he could read it, I don't know. It gives a lot of information, it's very detailed.
Sure, you can take a brief, a brief recess, so you can take a look at that. You may already have read that, but it was in our... It was in the... The citizen activity forms, and I think he actually gave a little bit more detail of his...
I'll move for a five-minute recess.
Well, I mean, I'm just gonna call a recess, I don't think you need a move or a recess. All right, did you wanna look at that?
Yeah, whatever we have.
It's in your package.
It's in your package.
I did look through my package, but it's come down to that. So both Mr. O'Leary's and...
It's 100.
Mr. Breen's is in there. I don't know.
Is it only Mr. O'Leary's citizen information form?
Mr. Breen's is in there because he was a new applicant. The one that's on file is not necessarily in there, with the other applicants.
Is Mr. O'Leary's?
Mr. Dmitri's isn't in there, Mr. O'Leary's is not in there.
Mr. Dmitri's and Mr. Dmitri's just the one page, just, we want reappointment.
Not everybody...
But I think we know Mr. O'Leary's background.
I don't, I don't. I really don't know his background.
Would you wanna look at Mr. Breen's or not?
I wanna look at Mr. Breen's, but it's not valid for me to make a vote without looking at Mr. O'Leary's at the same time.
I don't know if... I don't think I saw anything from him.
Well, carry on, do your job. Again, he's a reappointee, so it's, do you want to seek reappointment? Yes or no?
Oh, God.
Yes. That's all we do. That's all we require of our current incumbents, is to check off yes.
Right.
There's no other... So new applicants give you a more detailed background information on themselves, because they're introducing themselves to you, as opposed to someone who's been serving for a number of years. At least three would be an incumbent, or more.
Get to know them in the context of their work too.
There's a reason why Mr. Dmitri has made a recommendation, I'd like to hear it. I mean, you made your recommendation, and you gave some background, it's compelling.
He's not the appointing authority, he's recommending his good friend.
All right, so we're not... We took a recess not to argue, it was to give Mr. Wallner the opportunity to read this stuff, so...
Okay. What page is this on, please?
I think it's 87, is that the citizen activity reform?
87, you said?
87 for the citizen activity form, and then there's a, I believe, a two-page letter beginning on page 100.
Did we already handle this appointment?
We did, that was on Mark.
He's a developer, he's a developer.
It's on the... But he's been there 28 years, supported countless litigation, negotiated compromise deals against a court overseeing every 40B application of this one to date.
Again...
Never sit down.
Me either.
I'm not sure they can't evade.
I don't like being in this situation, this is a horrible situation.
Yeah, he didn't get to say anything.
I think it's a revestment of getting a vote from the committee, because it's a title on the board.
Yes, okay, and then what about incumbents, are they entitled to continue on and on terms?
One word in your office.
Let me see, I like. Given every consideration.
I, I will, it's the same way, you may want to bring it up, it's on the list, I just think you should see, I've never seen, I've never seen...
Well, I'm hoping you'll explain that as new.
I couldn't even begin, honestly, I, if someone asks me to expand, the first thing I say is, there's a written policy. I can't, I can't.
Only, the only procedure I've learned since I've been on the board is you go with liaison.
Liaison, I said, chair. Liaison of course, or, or, yeah.
Yeah, but doesn't necessarily, you know...
But you're the last word, liaison, are you the last word?
No, the board votes, it's the last word.
The board votes, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jay, did you get those things for, for, I didn't make it to the conference table. There may be personal information, you should not bother that.
Oh, duh, I'm not gonna put in someone's phone number, email, social security number first, but one last...
You know the drill.
I'll be right back.
Who's the other member, what state member?
It should be a form, and then it should be...
So, no one has to bring it.
Yeah, and this is the letter, it might be...
Along skating, remember the board?
Thanks.
He blew it. It's okay, how you doing?
Don't come back in session, my battery's died.
Uh-oh.
You got a charger?
Um, no, battery's gone, I'm going to floor.
It's okay, it's cowardly, you know, it's okay to maintain your political differences and what I hear, but there are ways to handle it, and show some courage, tell the person, you're not gonna recommend, you know, tell the chair, you're not gonna recommend his recommendation, it's not a big deal, shouldn't be a surprise, yeah, shouldn't be a surprise.
It's actually a disservice to the person he's recommending.
Huh?
It's a disservice to the person he's recommending, because I don't care how qualified he is, I can't, I can't even look at it, because I'm gonna go with people who've served, I'm always gonna go with these people.
You need a reason not to.
Oh, crap.
You need a reason not to, again, I've had, I was monitoring, the members of the finest kid, anybody, was the chairman, but it was not a dispatch, it was not...
Seriously?
Yeah, but I bought it up front, not gonna make you, don't, don't apply it, this is why, you know, you don't need it, I'm true, I'm true, and it's like, you know, and I, sorry, my appointment, it's my appointment, your reflection on me, I reported, I don't need any help with a man, it was, the school just died, twelve words, the school, not gonna do shit, he's, I'm putting it in again, okay.
They will just, they have one, else, you know, you have times, you got one shot, it's my shot, I'm taking a shot, it's my shot.
Some changes, what were you needing out of the syllabus?
Fritos, honey barbecue fritos.
Well, puts us in a very difficult situation.
Honey barbecues, fritos.
Put us in a situation, but it's the wrong way.
Yeah, she's like, it's gross, don't you want something with some substance to get you started eating, she said to me, like, you just go my food, gross. She said, yes.
So, you didn't have genetics?
No.
I had leftovers for a while, and I went to sell twice, and handled my genetic conditions.
Yeah, yeah, I went once, actually.
They improved ones, all the time, we paid thirty dollars, fifty dollars for the food.
We were with the kids, that's, that's...
Totally necessary, you know, boy, yeah. It was a recommendation, that'd be what it was, the board.
We had kitties, uh, on Saturday at my parents' house.
You brought it?
Yeah, I brought it over, and I had the left door yesterday.
Have only eaten me kitties by the Sunday, so...
Huh?
Are we on?
(laughing).
Good luck.
(inaudible).
(laughing).
I'm here, yeah.
Yeah, so we have, some sort of system there, it was really good, with the juice that would give you color.
You are good, do you have a chance?
Two or three members out there, referring amongst themselves, so.
(inaudible).
Two hours of a big cover.
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
Well, right now, we only have two replacement...
Sixty, sixty to seventy years' worth of experience, lock it away.
Does anyone have any double A batteries?
I don't have any double A, triple A batteries.
Steve, people are texting right now, both of yours, saying to me over hot line, over TV right now.
Good, it's okay, I mean, I'm standing over now, I'm gonna say publicly, again, the mic's on when you talk, so, we're good wise.
All righty, so, we are back in the meeting, right?
Yes.
I'm gonna move to a vote.
Tell, tell Monica.
Okay, so, we have, I need to go over, everyone knows what the posture is at this point, we are moving to a vote.
Just to, just to... Any last discussion? We're voting.
Mr.?
We've already discussed his head and awesome.
Mr. Waller?
This is doing a disservice to both Mr. O'Leary and the recommendation by Breen, he's completely suitable, it's not a question of that, the process is just an error, and we're not hearing from, from the chair of this board, which is very critical to our future.
How many chairs did you see here tonight?
So, one, one at a time, please, one at a time, all right?
So, I think we're just doing a disservice, and Mr. Dimitri has been surprised by what he's hearing over TV, and if he had known, he said he would have been here, and I believe he would be here, and so, again, this is just, to, to make the vote is wrong, because if I vote for Mr. O'Leary, if I name Mr. O'Leary, I'm doing a disservice to Mr. Breen, who looks very qualified, if I say Mr. Breen, I'm doing a disservice to Mr. O'Leary, who served for all these years, this is just, there's no good choice here, and that's not what we should, that's not the position we should be in as a board, that is not the position, time is our best friend, we should punt for two weeks, and pick this up again, and we have a chance to do this properly.
Okay, so, I know that...
That's my discussion.
I understand, and I know you made a motion to table, but that motion did not pass, so...
Yeah, for the record, I may just add one quick thing.
One, one quick thing.
I did speak with Mr. Dimitri on the break, and reiterated our conversation we had a few weeks ago, and I think it's fair to say we have a disagreement, I think he understands what I said, and why I said it, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
And just for the, my colleague's information, I got texted by another long-term, probably twenty-year member of the Board of Appeals, is appalled by what he's seeing right now, and does not want to be a party to it, and the follow-through may very well resign, so we're gonna be looking, we'll have plenty of vacancies, if that's what you're looking to accomplish.
This is what they did four years ago.
Well done.
All right, let's not, but, let's keep to the vote at hand, let's not be insulting to one another, there is a difference of opinion, that's what we have here.
No problem with the difference of opinion.
That's what we have here.
We have a little bit more than that, total misandling of the situation, total disregard for people who volunteer for this community, and how they're handled, that's what we have in front of us, it's okay to have differences of opinion, and, you know, to the entity questions, how many other chairs do we have here, none, you know why, because there were no other differences of opinion, they were all asked their opinion, they were in concert with their liaison, and they were given the courtesy of a phone call and asked as to whether or not, who they recommended, this was not the case with this particular situation.
Okay, so, I have to say, I don't ever recall seeing the chair, chairperson here during a board appointment, so, ultimately, the ultimate decision-making of over this falls with this board, some of these decisions are easy, some of these decisions aren't easy, but ultimately, it's our responsibility to take a vote, make an appointment, and so, I think that's where we're at, and we have heard, it's heard loud and clear from the, I guess, the members of the board that want to resign unless one particular member is reappointed despite the liaison's recommendation for another qualified candidate for the position, so...
Again, that's not what I'm getting for information, I'm getting information, they object to the process.
But then ultimately, the process is, it's up to the board to take the vote and make the decision on it, so, we may actually be having a, drawing more names, because we're taking a vote, but, that's a fact of, fact of the things that we do, I, I actually have an off-the-board hand-up in the background there, Maureen?
Can I ask a question, what, is there an official role of liaison and, from the board to another board, just as, to educate me, as, in my experience, I had always thought that it was like a, almost a clerk's role, where you would come back with information from what the board is doing, what's, what's, what's new, what projects have come up, that, that sort of thing, I had, I, I, is there an expanded definition of a liaison that gets appointed, you know, when you, like, when you have that list every, every year, and you all decide where you want to go?
I think that's a lot of questions in one, and I think we can talk about that offline, I think we have a motion on the floor, and we, we have a second to the motion, so, we have to address that first, but, but, you know, it's, it's not a clerical role, I can just answer you quickly to that, and then we can broaden the explanation of what that role is maybe offline with you, okay, because we have to move forward, we also have other stuff, we, we were going along just fine, and we have, we have a lot of other business we have to attend to, too, okay, so, now, there's a motion on the floor, there's a motion on the floor, there are four names in nomination, there are requests of the current chair on nominations, and there is a liaison's recommendation on nomination, so, let's call the vote, it's a roll-call vote, Mr. O'Leary.
I'll defer at the moment, please.
Defer, is that, so, deferring is a...
I'm deferring until...
Deferring until...
Everyone else is voting.
Okay, so, deferral renders your vote together with the majority under the rule.
What is that?
A deferral of a vote renders...
I would ask that you call someone else first, please.
Okay, Mr. Waller?
James Dimitri and Paul O'Leary.
Mr. Schultz?
James Dimitri and Bob Breen.
Mr. Gon, Ms., Mr. Gonzalez, he did it again, Ms. Gonzalez.
James Dimitri and Bob Breen.
And Mr. O'Leary.
Again, I asked to defer at this point until the chair votes.
Okay, so, the chair votes James Dimitri and Bob Breen and Mr. O'Leary.
And Mr. Dimitri and Paul O'Leary.
Okay, so, we have, we have to move on, next order of business.
Just as a matter of comment, Madam Chair, I think it's unfortunate, it happens to be my brother, but whether it be my brother or someone else's brother or sister, I think it's unfortunate, an incumbent member, a twenty-eight-year, a member, incumbent of any board committee or commission, was not extended the courtesy of a recommendation, or what the recommendation was gonna be of the liaison to the board, I think it was a cowardly act, and I think it's unfortunate.
Stop insulting me.
All right.
We don't insult other menus.
I'm sorry, I'll insult you, because you insulted everybody else, and every board committee or commission...
All right, you know what, that's enough, that's enough. Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Schultz.
Can you carry your brother's water anymore?
That's enough, that's enough.
Carry your brother's water, carry your brother's water.
All right, that's enough, that's enough, we're moving along.
We voted, move on.
All right, that's enough, that's enough, that's enough.
I have never seen, in all my years, I have served with almost thirty...
All right, okay, Steve, yeah, Steve, I'm gonna keep talking over to you, shut up. I'll talk over you all night if I have to, Steve. Steve, I'll keep talking over to you, shut up.
That's enough, guys, we're gonna take a brief recess, that's enough, guys.
I have served with almost thirty different people, and never...
Steve, I'm gonna keep talking over you until you all shut up.
It was unfortunate.
Come on, come on.
Five-minute recess, you said?
I believe it.
We're taking a five-minute recess?
Yes, yes, a five-minute recess.
It's a terrible disservice to this community, it's a disservice to the board.
All right, Mr. O'Leary.
Steve, carry his water a little more, Steve. Steve, carry his water a little more, Steve.
Be more childish.
It's your brother, Steve, please, it's your brother.
Be childish, and walk out of the room, Mr. Schultz, continue.
All right, let's, let's stop this, really.
By the way, Madam Chair, uh...
No.
No, no, no.
No.
You've passed over associate members...
You know something, I'm, I'm gonna take a brief recess, two of them.
We have, we have long-term serving associate members, if you didn't want to appoint an incumbent, you should have considered the associate members for full membership, and that wasn't done either.
Mr. O'Leary.
Yes, Madam Chair.
We've done with the vote.
I understand, but you understand, I don't even see the, I don't even see the associate members' names for consideration for full appointment, they weren't considered for the, by this board, where's Jennifer Platt's name?
Mr. O'Leary.
Where is Jennifer Platt's name?
I'm not going to fight with you, I'm not.
I have a question.
I...
Where is our associate member's name for consideration?
I didn't prepare the names for nomination, so, the names in nomination were presented to us, the forms were given to us, some of them, some of them weren't there.
Again, I was liaison to the Conservation Commission, two associate members' names were left off for consideration, I asked the clerk to include them for consideration of the board, just this evening, we were not put forth by the liaison, consideration of associate members who are long-serving associate members in this committee for consideration, where's that? Our liaison skedaddled, so I have no idea, why not? By the way, one of our associate members is a long-term serving member who's also an attorney, has been there for probably a dozen years, Jennifer Platt, not even considered, because the liaison didn't put it forward, why? Why? When he comes back, maybe we can ask.
No, we're not gonna consider...
No, we're not gonna ask why the associate members weren't considered for full membership?
No, we are not going to consider, the names in nomination were the names in nomination.
As a, as a member of the board, why wouldn't you want to consider the associate member?
Steve, I'm not gonna talk about this with you.
You don't want to?
I don't, I don't, the likelihood is we're gonna have to consider associate members in the next meeting, because of the mass exodus of the other members.
Why wouldn't they be considered now, he should know who the associate members are.
Those names weren't in nomination.
Because he didn't put it forward, I, my names for my associates were not put forward for Conservation Commission appointment, I put them forward and asked the clerk to include them, because I know my liaison assignments, I know my board's committees and commissions, and the board can make an informed decision based on everybody who's eligible, and the first ones who should be eligible are the ones who have been putting in the time and the effort and the hundreds of hours as an associate member, and one who's sitting in on the forty B hearing right now, hasn't even been considered for full membership, we're gonna be forced if there's resignations, we're gonna consider that, if she still wants to be considered, why, I don't know, why anybody would want to be considered for anything at this particular point, I do not know.
(inaudible).
I didn't look at them, I just, I just...
I didn't sign, I still have to sign everything.
Really?
I have a lot to sign there.
Here's another Sunday license.
They're in there for everything.
Am I?
Yeah.
These are just, yeah, I can flip through these ones, so, but do you have another?
No.
These only be Sunday licenses.
Is that the correct one?
Look, is, is your...
No.
If she didn't sign, all right, I'm sorry, I put them in.
Yeah, I was just gonna do it all at the end, because I had...
I'm sorry, I thought you signed them all.
I had a key screen, so I couldn't...
All right, I think we're gonna, we can finish it at the end.
Is that the correct one?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. We'll look at them, and it's time to kind of reconvene, we have to get moving, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I, I had them there, because I was gonna sign them after.
All right.
So, yeah, make sure, make sure I'm on everything in that.
Shane, do you mind if we just keep that pile, and at the end of the meeting, we can, we'll, we'll make sure we signed everything, okay? All right, so, we'll call the meeting, are you ready? Are you ready, all set? Oh, you, are you leaving?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane, you're welcome.
Okay, let's call the meeting back to order, in our next, we're, we're through with all of our licenses and appointments, our next order of business is water, water wastewater planning advisory committee review of the charge, Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, as a follow-up to the conversation that took place at the board's last meeting, I've provided a copy of the Water and Wastewater Planning Committee, Planning Advisory Committee's charge, as approved, I believe, in two thousand and ten, this would effectively be the committee that, that we discussed, it has not necessarily been active, so I put the, the charge there for the board's review and, you know, possible consideration.
And, Mr. Gilberto, how many members are on this committee, or have been on it in the past?
I believe, I believe it's a, a seven-member committee, I'll check with the town clerk's online information system to confirm, it has not been active, at least not in the five years that I have worked for the town, so it certainly has not been active recently.
And are there any current appointees to the committee?
There are, I believe that one is listed as a former select board member by virtue of their former role, and, bear with me while I bring up the current membership listing, I can go through it in detail. So, I'm showing a seven-member committee with three... Be childish and walk out of the room, Mr. Schultz. Continue.
All right, let's stop this, really.
By the way, Madam Chair.
No.
No, no, no.
No.
You've passed over associate members.
You know something? I'm gonna take a brief recess.
We have long-term serving associate members. If you didn't want to appoint an incumbent, you should have considered the associate members for full membership, and that wasn't done either.
Mr. O'Leary.
Yes, Madam Chair.
We've done with the vote.
I understand. But you understand, I don't even see the- I don't even see the associate members' names for consideration for full appointment. They weren't considered for- by this board. Where's Jennifer Platt's name?
Mr. O'Leary.
Where is Jennifer Platt's name?
I'm not going to fight with you. I'm not.
I have a question.
I-
Where is our associate member's name for consideration?
I didn't prepare the names for nomination. So, the names and nomination were presented to us. The forms were given to us. Some of them, some of them weren't there.
Again, I was liaison to the Conservation Commission. Two associate members' names were left off for consideration. I asked the clerk to include them for consideration of the board just this evening. We were not put forth by the liaison consideration of associate members who are long-serving associate members in this committee for consideration. Where's that? Our liaison skedaddled, so I have no idea. Why not? By the way, one of our associate members is a long-term serving member who's also an attorney, has been there for probably a dozen years. Jennifer Platt. Not even considered because the liaison didn't put it forward. Why? Why? When he comes back, maybe we can ask.
No, we're not gonna consider.
No? We're not gonna ask why the associate members weren't considered for full membership?
No, we are not going to consider. The names and nomination were the names and nomination.
As a member of the board, why wouldn't you want to consider the associate member?
Steve, I'm not gonna talk about this with you.
You don't want to?
I don't. I don't. The likelihood is we're gonna have to consider associate members in the next meeting because of the mass exodus of the other members.
Why wouldn't they be considered now? He should know who the associate members are.
Those names weren't in nomination.
Because he didn't put it forward. I- my names for my associates were not put forward for Conservation Commission appointment. I put them forward and asked the clerk to include them because I know my liaison assignments. I know my boards committees and commissions. And the board can make an informed decision based on everybody who's eligible. And the first ones who should be eligible are the ones who have been putting in the time and the effort and the hundreds of hours as an associate member and one who's sitting in on the forty B hearing right now, isn't even been considered for full membership. We're gonna be forced if there's resignations, we're gonna consider that, if she still wants to be considered. Why, I don't know. Why anybody would want to be considered for anything at this particular point, I do not know.
I didn't look at them. I just- I just kinda-
I didn't sign. I still have to sign everything.
Really?
I have a lot to sign there.
Oh, here's another Sunday basis. They're in there for everything.
Am I?
Yeah. These are just- yeah, I can flip through these ones, so. Do you have another?
No.
Is that the correct one? Look, is- is your-
No.
She didn't sign. All right. I'm sorry. I put them in.
Yeah. I was just gonna do it all at the end because I had.
I'm sorry. I thought you signed them all.
I had a key screen, so I couldn't.
All right. I think we're gonna- we can finish it at the end.
Is that the correct book, right?
Mm-hmm.
Three or two?
We'll look at them. It's time to kinda reevaluate. We have to get moving.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I had them there because I was gonna sign them after.
All right.
So, yeah, make sure- make sure I'm on everything now.
Okay. Jane, do you mind if we just keep that pile at the end of the meeting? We can-
We can all do it.
We'll make sure we signed everything, okay? All right. So, we'll call the meeting. Are you ready? Are you ready? All set? Oh, you- are you leaving?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Okay. Let's call the meeting back to order. In our next- we're through with all of our licenses and appointments. Our next order of business is Water- Water-Wastewater Planning Advisory Committee Review of the Charge. Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, as a follow-up to the conversation that took place at the board's last meeting, I've provided a copy of the Water and Wastewater Planning Committee- Planning Advisory Committee's charge as approved, I believe, in two thousand and ten. This would effectively be the committee that- that we discussed that has not necessarily been active. So, I put the charge there for the board's review and, you know, possible consideration.
And, Mr. Gilberto, how many members are on this committee or have been on it in the past?
I believe it's a seven-member committee. I'll check with the town clerk's online information system to confirm. It has not been active, at least not in the five years that I have worked for the town. So, it certainly has not been active recently.
And are there any current appointees to the committee?
There are. I believe that one is listed as a former select board member by virtue of their former role. And bear with me while I bring up the current membership listing. I can go through it in detail. So, I'm showing a seven-member committee with three positions currently filled, although one is identified as a select board representative, who I mentioned in the last meeting is no longer a select board representative. So, just to go over the membership, there's listed DPW representative, health representative, what I would call an at-large term, two select board representatives, one of which is listed as being held by Mr. Misari, a CPC representative listed as being held by Warren Pierce Jr., and then what it looks like an at-large position held by Luke Roy. Luke Roy. So, three of the seven seats are filled, but one of them is incorrectly identified. The person's no longer a board member.
And as the members recall, the last time we discussed this was on the basis of maybe reinitiating or reactivating the committee, given the work that is ongoing with regard to water and sewer. So, I think town administrator wanted us to take a look at this on the docket this evening for any kind of further commentary of the members to see if we needed to modify or revise the charge of the committee. So, it's in- on page one-eleven in the share folder.
Mm-hmm.
And it's only a one-page, really, one-page mission statement of the committee. And it was formed for long-term water and wastewater issues to address those. And if the members recall, the last discussion was maybe we wait, maybe we reactivate it now so that the- maybe we can consider appointments to that committee and newer members can, you know, get up to speed with respect to the, you know, the- what's going on with both of those issues at the moment. So, we've had an ongoing wastewater update and water update every- every meeting so far, just so that the board members can be apprised as to what the status is of permitting, you know, facilities and things of that nature. So, if the members have had a chance to take a look at the mission, does anyone have any further- Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, obviously, it includes water, which is almost becoming an on-issue at this point. So, a lot of that will need to go away. And the function, the mission, that paragraph is very- it's very broad in my mind. It's almost too much, and we already have another group that's already doing a lot of this effort. So, it's just- the scope of it has to be redefined from- to work with the current group that we already have working on this, in my mind. Just when I looked at this briefly, that's those the two biggest things I picked up on. I'll also just add that in just informal questions with people who potentially might be on this board, there is some enthusiasm for doing it, but there's also some strategic reasons for not. It'd be good to- it's not a bad idea to form it or to create it or to prepare for it, but it feels premature for where we are in the process right now. So, from my opinion, just from looking at, you know, weighted opinions from different people, it feels a little premature. But I think at some point, we're gonna need it. I just don't think it's- nothing's gonna change right now with it being in existence or not being in existence. Just my view.
Quick question for you, Mr. Gilberto. This board came up with the mission statement of this committee, or did the committee itself come up with its mission statement?
I believe that there is a vote of this board approving the establishment of the committee, including this charge. The origin of it prior to that in two thousand and ten, I have to only assume it came from the select board, but I don't know that to be fact.
All right. Anybody else have any comment- comment on it or discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
My comments are the same as the word at the last meeting. We talked about reformulating this again. Again, I too believe it's premature until we get a clearer direction as to functionality of implementing any type of wastewater treatment through Andover, Greater Large Sewer, and the associated costs with it. And whether- until this board makes a determination as to how to implement it, whether it be through phasing or one-felled swoop, I think it's- I think it's premature. So, it's a- again, we could use all the help we can get once we know what direction we're going in and what the timelines are going to be. But until then, there isn't gonna be much for them to do. And I think injecting more people and taking more of their time unnecessarily as we move forward, because we are moving forward, moving forward rather quickly, until we know what direction we're going in and this board has made a determination as to what that direction's going to be, I don't think we need the help yet. And again, I don't think we'll be in a position to give them a mission statement and direction to assist us in going out there and selling it to the public. So, I just think, you know, we have a good working group right now through the administration and professional staff, along with liaisons from this- this board, to, you know, along with our consultants, to find out what direction are we really gonna take and how- how are we gonna do it, you know, and the relationships with the Andover and Greater Large Sewer District. That can only be handled through the administration and this board. So, until those things are ironed out, I think it's premature. So, I don't think it's critical at this point. I don't think we should be necessarily asking for volunteers when there isn't gonna be much for them to do meaningfully new for a while down the road.
Mr. O'Leary? I mean, I'm Mr. Schultz. Looking right at you. I wasn't sure if Mr. O'Leary was finished.
No problem. The EDC just did an economic business forum at Kitty's, probably a month or so ago. And we spoke with all the stakeholders in the businesses. They're on Twenty-Eighth Concord Street, and we've told them, we've rolled out our plans for wastewater and some timelines. I think- well, I do agree that there's not a whole lot this board is gonna- this committee's gonna do right now, but I think it should be formulated now. I think the stakeholders should have a stake in this. I think the business community should be involved in this. I think these boards, like our boards, change. These committees often don't. I think this has to be pushed. I think this is only gonna get done, meaning wastewater is if we push it with Andover. If we wait for Andover to do it for us, we're gonna be waiting a long time, and we're never gonna have it. So, I think the- I think the business community, the stakeholders, should have a committee. Granted, they may just meet quarterly for the first year or two. But I think this should be formed now and, you know, keep it on the radar screen. Keep public awareness of the wastewater products- projects that are coming. I think it's a good idea, and I think it should- I know EDC's gonna address this issue of picking a committee member at their next meeting if this board was to be revitalized. And again, there's not a whole lot they would do right now, but I think they should meet, and I think the stakeholders should be heard on this issue.
Anyone else?
Wouldn't the chairs have to be renamed if we're gonna do EDC and other, you know, private people? We have one- I just heard your chair, so I don't know. Are they pre-assigned or is it flexible?
Well, it reads- the membership is- it reads as a combination of representatives from various elected and appointed boards, committees, and employees of the Town of North Reading and a cross-section of North Reading, citizens of diverse interests. Membership shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, who shall make changes in the membership as necessary.
Okay.
It's not really a decision of each individual board or commission. I think where this can be modernized or updated from the two thousand and ten time that it was initiated is that we have a permanent, so to speak, water supply. But I think that's pretty much the charge or the function of the board is still relevant to what's going on now and relevant to what is gonna be happening in the future. But certainly evaluating emergency water sources probably was done in terms of our connection.
Yeah.
Or maintaining the connection.
Right.
And all the efforts that were done with maintaining the connection at Andover. But- and then redundancy efforts, I think, were considered throughout the course of that process. So, I think that might be the only- that might be my only thought in terms of the board's making a modern modification of the function.
And I would even go so far as to say, this is really a wastewater planning advisory. I don't think water needs even be on here. I think that's- it's not part of the scope anymore.
No, I think it's just a wastewater planning advisory committee.
Yeah, because I think we have liaisons that are right now handling the expansion of water, and we have the consultant, the expert, working on that on a regular basis. So, I guess would we wanna consider maybe offering our- it's the first time we're looking at this, and so maybe we can, by the next meeting, offer some suggestions on- I think it's intentionally vague to fit whatever function the board needs the committee to fulfill, but do we wanna make some- two of the members wanna hold off on it. Do we at least wanna make some, you know, recommendations on-
I don't think there's any problem. I think at some point, we're gonna need it. So, I don't see any problem in creating the one-page or mission statement. It's just a question of when you, you know, implement. So, it's good to plan ahead. I have no problem with planning ahead. Even if we don't flip the switch, it's good to plan ahead, so.
Right. Mr. O'Leary? I'm sorry, Mr. Wallner, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
All right. Mr. O'Leary?
The thing is, you know, when this was formed, you know, a lot of it was speculative. You know, what should we do? How should we go about it? What should we be doing? This board and prior boards, most recent prior boards, have already made those determinations. We have a long-term solution for water now. In that deal, we also got our supplier to agree to assist us in joining the Greater Large Sewer District. So, those determinations have already been made, which is, again, if you look at, you know, required by planning, organizational, financial, operational, you know, how we're gonna do, where we're going, what are we gonna be doing, those decisions have already been made. We're not going MWRA. It's not an option for us. So, our only option is now Greater Large Sewer, and it's through Andover. We have long-term water solutions now, and it's- that's pretty much a done deal. So, again, I don't- I don't see the purpose right now, you know, other than, you know, at some point, we're going to need all hands on deck to go out and inform the electorate at our meeting and the electorate to support wastewater plan. So, that's what we're gonna need and when we're gonna need it. But until we have those facts, this group is not gonna help us glean those facts. The process is already in place, and the individuals that are gonna be responsible are already in place and doing that work. So, I don't get it. I don't understand right now. Right now, what we need is, once we have formulated our plan, we know what it is going to be, that's the time to form some sort of a committee to assist us in going out there, to buy into the program, and then get out there and sell it to the public. Otherwise, there's no other work to be done. There really isn't any other work to be done. It's being done right now. We have our direction. We have our source. We have our target, you know, and we know what the route's gonna be. Now, it just comes down to cost affordability and how we're gonna implement it. So, a lot of the work that was spelled out in this mission nine years ago has been done. So, I- again, I'm not one for turning people away, you know, assisting us, but I think what they're gonna need to assist us in is buying into the plan that we finally formulate and, that's what it's called, sell it to the public. So, a lot of what was needed to be done back then is already underway and being done, and decisions have already been made because they're made for us or by us and for us. So, I guess I'm questioning the need at this time.
Okay. I think that's what you mentioned the last. I think both members mentioned.
I'm not looking to waste people's time.
Both colleagues mentioned that. I think what it's before us on is to kind of revise the- revise the charge. And I would agree that we have sort of- that efforts were already achieved or results yielded with respect to the permanent water solution here. So, that portion of the function is mainly completed, and people are actively, you know, experts and consultants are actively working on that. I think this was initiated probably miles before that result was yielded, of course, years before that result was yielded. I think the two-year agreement was voted on in two thousand and fifteen, when I first became a member of the board. So, that was a result of years of- years of efforts prior to that. So, it's, you know, probably a good thing that it has a direction to move in, and I don't think it's a bad thing to revise the charge and then bring people on board that can get up to speed with this because it took a long, long time to get up to speed on that- that portion of events that have transpired. And I'm sure that this committee's probably gonna wanna, you know, if there'll be members- membership to, you know, take part, they'll wanna get up to speed and be involved in some of the things that are going on- going on right now or expected to go on right now. So, we can tie in. But I'm just thinking today, I'm just- our thought today isn't to establish or appoint committee members. So, we don't even have any names before it's for nomination.
Right.
It's really just to revise this, the function. Do we want to, as a board, take a look at this and revise the function? That's really what it's before us on. No one had it last meeting. We found it, or Michael found it, and that's why what we're talking about. Not necessarily filling a committee today.
Yep.
Or tomorrow, or two weeks from now. But just, let's revise the functions or revise the mission statement. So, maybe what we can do is agree that, you know, we'll- we'll take a look at it at the next meeting if there's- if people- if members wanna send their comments directly to Mr. Gilberto to add in, similar to what we're- what we did with the next thing that we're gonna be considering. And maybe we can work on modernizing or, you know, revising this for the next meeting. All right? Anybody else have any more comment or discussion or? No? All right. So, next order of business will be the draft, review the draft of the unacceptable street improvement policy. And this is our second or third review of this, this second review of this policy. And if the members recall, this really is a policy we're trying to put in place for sharing responsibility with- sharing responsibility with private ways that might want their street improved on a one-time basis, similar to betterments, although not- not the same because we're not gonna accept the street in the end of the improvement. So, you can see from the policy, and I don't know if, Michael, you- Mr. Gilberto, you wanna highlight some of the changes, but you can see from the policy that's included in your Dropbox that, I think we're on one, page one-twelve, there's highlighted the areas that have been- that have been mod- modified, right, revised.
The modifications are few. What I really did was take the feedback that I heard at the board's discussion of this at the last meeting or the meeting prior and incorporate them. And I added a couple of comments as well, just to provide some background. I can go through them all if the board members would like. There are a lot of them, obviously. But, you know, in terms of- I guess what I'll do is I'll start with the changes. The feedback was that the language in the third bullet was restrictive in requiring the fifty percent match. So, I added the word generally to give the board the flexibility. And then I also add in that same bullet that nothing in the policy shall preclude the select board with the approval of town meeting from entering into an agreement to provide more or less than fifty percent of the necessary funds, which I think is consistent with that word, generally. Moving on, a couple of bullets down, the red writing, I think it's number five, excuse me, six, where I have added in here, abutting property owners shall be required to contribute a combined total of fifty percent of the funding required to develop a reasonable cost estimate to be deposited into the appropriate town gift account. Any remaining balance after a cost estimate is developed shall be applied to the abutter's portion of the construction cost or refunded in the event construction is not approved by- at- by or at either of the two subsequent town meetings. So, that was intended to reflect feedback I heard in the board's discussion, which described a desire to have the abutting property owners contribute to the design. Now, they did not contribute to the feasibility and design work that was done for Swampon Road, so this would be different than what happened with Swampon Road. But I've added that language to reflect the discussion. There was an inconsistency here in the first bullet on the next page, where there was a reference to the majority of property owners residing on the private street, representing a majority of all the road franchise. It's clear, if we're gonna do a road improvement in this fashion, we need all of the property owners involved to sign on. We can't do it otherwise. So, I've updated that to be correct. There was a desire to give a longer period of time for the abutting property owners to come up with the money, so I've increased that to a hundred and eighty days, which I think is what was suggested at the last meeting. And then there was some discussion about the issue of the easements being recorded at the registry of deeds, so I added that language as well. at the registry of deeds, so I added that language as well. So that sort of summarizes the, the changes from the board's last discussion. I would also note, though, that I have talked with the town planner on a couple of occasions about this, and I guess I would just remind, for the purposes of this discussion, the board, that this policy is intended to address situations where there is not a road layout right now, which is what's going on with Swan Pond Road. For roads where there is a layout, we have a betterment bylaws called assessments, actually, chapter 25, and I've included it in the packet in the past couple of meetings. I don't know that it's appropriate for this particular project, meaning the Swan Pond Road project, but one alternative that might be available to us would be to seek to modify the town zoning bylaws where if the town were to acquire an easement or the, the land for purposes of this road construction by eminent domain, and we have to structure however that would happen and whatever thresholds would be required, we may be able to modify the bylaw to avoid creating that zoning nonconformance that we've been talking about that happens when we separate one part of the parcel from another. So that would be a bylaw amendment that might be an option to us. I don't, again, I don't know that it's something that would serve us well for the Swan Pond Road project because that has already gone to town meeting, and we've already said how we intend to hear it, how we intend to handle it. But it's an alternative that might be a solution to allow us to get these roads on a path to be accepted by the town and getting the, either an easement or a fee in the roadway for us. We may or may not want to hear more about that as an option from the planner and town council, but I do feel I ought to at least bring that up. I'm not, again, I'm not sure that it helps us with the Swan Pond Road project.
So, oh, Mr. Schultz?
Michael, we kind of kicked around in capital tonight, is what are we going to do with, when we improve these roads, we're going to have to improve water mains in conjunction with the roads? Do we want to incorporate that into the, the cost of, of doing these things? I remember tonight with DPW indicating that just a lot of times if you repair a road, you're going to have some, they call spaghetti lines in some of these unacceptable roads that are out there that you're going to have to replace. Should we somehow incorporate that into this policy?
I think that the general rule of thumb is if we're going to be paving any of these roads and we're going to be improving them to the condition that they could be paved maybe better than they have been in the past historically, we would want to address any of the underground utilities. So, I mean, that would make sense. It doesn't apply in the case of Swan Pond Road, there's no water main out there.
Right.
But, you know, there are plenty of these roads that are out there where the so-called spaghetti service lines are in the ground, multiple lines running next to each other that would be better served by having them made. So I think that's something that could, that certainly the board could consider.
Just in relation to that, I think if town meeting votes to, you know, support some projects such as this, generally the water mains and stuff would be, replacement mains would be through the water department anyway, right? In other words?
I mean, I can't speak to what's happened by custom. I can speak to what the bylaw says, and yes, if you were to follow the bylaw, it would be an assessment, there'd be a 50% share, that work could be done as well, from what I can see in the bylaw. But in terms of the, what generally happens with these projects, my understanding is we usually just end up doing, doing the paving. Maybe we do the water if there's a developer that's involved. So it's the board's pleasure, really. How do you, how do you want to?
But we have another, in other instances where we haven't necessarily charged the director of abuddings here for replacement of the water lines because we know they're all, we know they're going to be replaced at some point. They break at times, and we go in and fix them anyway. So I don't know if.
Yes, so that was reported to us by the water superintendent, he referenced that very example where a petition was filed for water main improvements for the 50-50 cost share, and town meeting opted to vote 100%. So the town paid for the whole water main. He didn't give a specific example, but.
Because people are paying their water bills anyway, you know, and supporting the rest of the community and whether they're on accepted street or not. To me, if town meeting buys into redoing the road, the water department, through their capital, and again, through the assessments and everything else, and they already pay through their water bills, should be covering those costs.
We're just saying if by, if by redoing the road, we incur water costs vis a vis solely by the purpose of redoing the road, how do I, how do I want to handle that? We otherwise wouldn't be fixing these things but for we're putting a road in. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, and my response would be, would be that if town meeting votes to do the road over, water department will pay for the costs of replacing those water lines because these people are going to be paying their water bills anyway. And through those water bills, they're supporting all the other water projects throughout the town also. They shouldn't be hit with an additional assessment, but.
Isn't the?
Yeah, that may, may speed up the process for that particular road, but town meeting will have voted already to redo that, redo that road, so the water line should just be, you know, upgraded or replaced at that time, maybe ahead of schedule. Because if it breaks, we're going to take care of it anyway. The water department's going to take care of it anyway. And it makes sense before you go and lay out the road.
It's ours, it's ours anyway. The water line in the road is ours.
What I'm saying is if you get a situation where but for us are improving the road, now we have to improve a water line that we wouldn't have to improve otherwise, how do we want to handle that situation? I mean, I think that's something that neighbors should.
Eventually, we would have to.
How does that work with the other plans, Mike?
So I'm, I'm reading the, the bylaw, chapter 25, and it makes reference to streets, sidewalks, and storm drains. Interestingly, I don't see a reference to water, which I'm surprised at, but nothing was surprising at this point, too.
I'm trying to remember if I had to pay for that when I.
I'm sorry?
I'm trying to remember if I had to pay for that when I improved my road.
It's likely that, if you were, if you were improving the road, it's likely that you did.
Yeah, you're building a new home, you're going to improve the road, you're going to bring a new water line to your new, new service.
Yeah, because I didn't have one.
Right, you didn't have one, right. But this is different. These are existing homes that are already on the water system, and you're going to be paving over it. If it's this type of a road, they're probably aged, you know, they're aged, so they're going to be somehow, somewhere, they're going to be replaced, whether, whether they break or they're on a regular schedule. To me, the bylaw is somewhat silent for a reason.
So reading further along, I see there's another section that's dedicated for public water supply in sewers, talking about water or sewer improved betterments being assessed under the uniform unit method, town being required to provide, to provide 50% of necessary funds. So again, this would, both of these sections would apply right now in the instances where there is a road layout. My understanding of the purpose of the policy is to apply in the instances where there is not a road layout. If I have that wrong, certainly I would love to be corrected so I can address the board's desires, but right now, we have apparently two processes that reflect, that address us. Again, how often and when we last actually followed them in doing these projects, I couldn't even begin to tell you.
Again, I think our policy should allow as much, maximum flexibility on the board's part to make a recommendation to town meeting as to what to find, what not to find. Whatever we make of a recommendation to town meeting, let them vote on it. And again, it could always be amended, too.
So I think that the change does allow for that, for sure. It says 50, but then it says we're free to, to suggest that a different, a different percentage.
I just think the most, the more flexibility we have, the better we are able to address any given situation. Because Swan Pond is different than Travelwood. So, bless you.
All right. So are we satisfied with the modifications made to, to this? And so we have two read-throughs before we actually adopt it essentially?
Well, narrowly, you would approve it at the second, in the second reading, but I didn't believe that we were ready to do that this evening, so it's not structured that way.
No. Well, we want to make sure there's no pink in it. It's just black and white, no typos. Does anyone have any other comments with regard to any revisions or the revisions made or anything necessary?
I should note that this, only now having come back to the board, it has not gone to the planning commission, and I do believe that the board discussed it the last meeting, they wanted some feedback. So I don't know if you want me to send it to the planner for them to review before we actually formally consider it as a policy. I also know that there are members of the finance committee who have input, I've encouraged them to provide that input to the select board if they wish to, and I know they've spoken with some of the members of the board individually. But if you want me to send it to the planning commission, that might be the, this might be the time. If we're, if we're pretty sure this is where we think this board stands, this would probably be the time to send it to the planning commission.
So what is the board's pleasure? Any, Mr., oh, Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, I, I see absolutely no harm in asking other people to review. We don't have any pressure to us to do anything at this point, so let's have it carefully reviewed by as many people who have a stake in it as possible.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just in relation to comment number MPG, that you went, number five, there were all owners of all properties abutting directly must be submitted a letter signed by all owners. So are we going to allow, you know, one person to veto?
Yeah.
The whole neighborhood?
Yes.
Yeah.
From a liability standpoint, we can't just go on someone's land.
No, but again, if there's a potential for a workaround, we shouldn't avoid the workaround. Again, if it's the last person at the end of the, last house on the left, you know.
Then they're not affected by the project. That's fine.
Well, no, it depends what the project is.
Well, if you stop it before their house, they're not, they're not affected by it.
So that, what I'm saying is, you know.
So that you're suggesting maybe a revision of considering circumstances? The one, Swan Pond's an anomaly because the, the DPW director said you can't stop and start, but there might be another road where you could pave to, let's say, right before the last resident who doesn't want to participate, even though they benefit from it, you know? So I think in Swan Pond, right in the middle, there was an owner who didn't want to participate. They were having a struggle.
But again, is it, I mean, are we looking for the owners to sign off on it as far as financial responsibility? And I know in another section, it would say that they're responsible for, you know, and how they.
Divvy it up.
That's, that's, come right out and say it, but you know, but how they divvy it up is between them.
No, I think it was just authorization.
But everybody has to sign off.
Everybody has to authorize the, the project. You don't have to pay for it.
I'm just concerned that that may be a wrinkle, you know, because I think in Swan Pond's situation, there may be a situation where they're willing at some point to sign off if they're not financially responsible, but I don't know that this would allow for that at the beginning stages of the project. At one point, I don't have it, let us say that, it must be submitted. At one point, do all owners have to sign off? I guess.
It's a pretty specific saying of the all properties budding or directly impacted by the proposed project. So I think it, I don't know if it would make sense for the town to chip in 50% of its money to improve a road where not everybody on the road wants to allow that. It's a private way. So, okay, Mr. Gilberto.
To answer the question, the intention was that there would be a, a letter of interest signed by the property owners upfront for a project to even be considered. That, that's the way it's been drafted.
That's a letter of interest. That's, that's not the release.
No, no, the release, I think, is further along in the process as we described here. Yeah, so the, the, the thinking was the releases would be signed further along, and the reason is because a release.
Will come after they figure out the cost.
Yeah, they want to know the cost, right. And so you want to be able to provide that cost.
But in order to get the cost, they have to come up with 50% of the money to estimate it, right?
That, that's, if outside resources are required in the opinion of the public works director, from what I heard at the October 28th board meeting, the idea was that the, they would come up with their share. So I, I think the reason we want to establish who's in and who's, who's interested and who's not interested early is because, as we saw with the case in Swan Pond Road, it may affect the design, where we're locating stone water retention basins, for example. So that, I think the thinking was get an indication of what we're actually trying to do for a project before we start spending funding to design it, if we have to. And in some cases, you may not have to. It may not be as complicated as Swan Pond Road. And I think that the, this policy, which I think is more of a procedure at this point than a policy, trying to step by step outline it, but I think it could be, it could serve the purpose of a policy if need be.
Okay. So do we want to take some more consideration of it, or do you, are we ready to at least share it around?
Again, I think this is terrific, you know, I think it's something that's, that's long overdue, and it provides us with an opportunity to address some situations around the community that we haven't really done except on a very limited basis over the years when someone came forward and said, here's some money. I think it's, I think it's a good idea, and I also agree that we should run it by the planning commission and the other appropriate boards or committees for the rip point before we accept it. So.
Okay. So I think it's ready for that, I think it's ready for that transmission, and we'll still have the opportunity before we ordain it to.
And we will add water improvements for consideration, if I heard that correctly to this. Is that correct?
Not necessarily.
No.
No, not add water.
Well, again.
Maybe add water.
I think it should be discretionary, depending upon the size of the project, the age of the pipes and all the rest. It shouldn't be a mandatory 50, 50% there cost if town meeting buys it. So, you know, so maybe, a may, so it'd be a, it may be a requisite condition, but then again, it may not. So the board may determine that up to 50% will be provided. You know, to me, everybody in town that's tied into our water system is already paying for all the other water improvements around town, so they should necessarily be subjected to water improvements to their home based upon the project. Because if we were redoing another, when we do other streets, redo other streets, we determine it's more cost effective to do the water mains and do the storm water replacement before we repave it, just because it's too busy to pave it, so.
So am I hearing that the board wishes?
You don't hear it from me.
Board wishes to add the ability to include water improvements in this program? Or?
No.
No.
Well, I mean, yes, Mr. O'Leary.
I think depending on the situation, it shouldn't be.
Right, so we need the flexibility again to.
Well, I think the word flexibility, I think we need a policy. Policies shouldn't be flexible in the sense that you can take care of this street and not take care of this street. I think people need to know what they're getting into. It's got to be uniform and consistent.
Would that, would that be part of, when they're looking at the cost? Would that be part of the cost, that that would be upfront?
So replacement of.
If it was necessary, if they needed.
Replacement of water mains is a completely different project than, depending on what type of construction the DPW director determines needs to be done on the road, you know, are they going to do full-depth reconstruction of the road? Are they just going to do an overlay of the road? I mean, I think it depends on a case-by-case basis on what, what the plan is and what they can do. I mean, we keep going back to Swan Pond, but there's a whole host of anomalies in Swan Pond that have to be considered, but one thing that does need to be a part of this are storm drains, and that, that's pretty clear. But not replacement of water mains, that's a totally different location in the, in the roadway as well as project cost, and people have to be able to chip in 50% of the cost.
A lot of these roadways, they're not going to meet standards, so they're going to be in the middle of the roadway, or they're going to be in the, in the right of way or in the.
Hopefully not.
The access.
Or in, or in our case, there was no water pipes that, I mean, there was a well.
Right, so in that case, you'd have to.
The water had to be run.
You'd have to cover the cost. You know, to me, if there's nothing there, you'd have to cover the cost. If there's an infrastructure there, and you're going to be paving over it, and it makes sense to replace the infrastructure that's there, that's part of the main, the water system that we already supply and they're already paying for through their water bills, you know, then there needs to be some, you know, recognition of that, so that, should they have to cover the whole cost? Should they have to cover 50% of the cost? Or does it make sense? And we have some accepted streets that we're redoing now and reclaiming, and, you know, they were accepted streets, you know, 40 years ago, and, you know, the infrastructure was pulled and was put in, and we pay for all that anyway. Well, these people, you know, live here, pay taxes, and have the infrastructure in place already. So again, I'm just saying, rather than mandating that it's going to be 50% to do the water, let's just allow us to waive it, or 25% or whatever it's going to be, that's all, rather than hard and fast. And again, it depends on the situation. In your case, where there was no service there before, then you own putting in the new service, you know, to your convenience.
How many roads would we have in that situation? Would, would there be many that wouldn't even have water?
So you would, again, if I'm wrong, someone's going to correct me, but the policy's intended to apply in the instances where there is not a road layout. So by definition, we've eliminated a ton of the unacceptable roads here in town. And then you're talking within the category of the roads with no layout, those that actually have. have water service, servicing them, which, there may be a few. We, we saw an example presented today of a spaghetti line sort of disaster on a particular road off of Lakeside Boulevard, and, you know, the fact is, there's a layout there on that road. That road is perfectly eligible for improvement under our Chapter 25 assessments by law, and perfectly acceptable for the improvements associated with the section that relates to water. So this policy wasn't intended, at least as far as I understood it, to address those.
Right.
So to answer it succinctly, there's not, there's probably not very many. I mean, we've stumbled across one that's more challenging, it just happens to not have water, so we don't have to deal with the issue. I don't think there's any utilities on the road, honestly.
We just happened to stumble on that example.
Yeah, today, yeah, just cited as an example, it's been a challenge for multiple years.
If almost everything is custom, I'd leave yourself flexibility wherever you can. And again, and the, the project will be what the project is, if people decide not to do it after they hear about it, but I'd leave flexibility, because it's all custom, it sounds very custom, very, very remote.
Again, yeah, allow up to, allow up to fifty percent to be determined by the Board, which is you're negotiating with the.
At the end of the day, if they don't want to do it, they're not going to do it.
It's pretty clear that it does do that. I think adding in the requirement to incorporate in replacement of water mains is something a little, it's taken it into a, a different direction than I think what this was intended to cover. And I think in the example where it's unacceptable or, not unacceptable, but a private way, and it might be in the middle of the road or something, if the DPW director determines that's going to come up and be replaced, and that would be part of the evaluation of costs anyway, but it's not likely that our water main is, you know, stuck to the sur, that high to the surface of the road, but who knows? I'm not an engineer, so.
I, I do think, he's not here, obviously, but if the DPW director were here, I, I think he would probably say that if we were going to invest the town's money in whatever proportion of a project involving a la, a road, in quotation, with pipes on the ground, that we would want to address whatever condition those pipes are in. Whose responsibility that is, he would say, he's not going to, that's for us to decide here.
Right, and.
But.
And I would perhaps have to assume that we have these, just like the roadways, the public roadways, that we also have our water mains on a schedule of replacement, depending on their age, so I would assume we have that in progress as it is.
So we have water mains, but these are not mains. These instances would almost entirely be individual house services that are the responsibility of the private homeowner, to the point where they connect with the main, and I think that's the concern that would be highlighted here.
I see, so they would, they might be stuck in the middle of the road that's being repaved, and they're going to get impacted by that.
Or that we may know that they're dated and that they, before we pave the road, that we ought to have a water main extending the length of it, if we're going to invest the town's money. That, that's really what the issue is, do we want to get into that? And, you know, when we're just doing a top coat on it, it's not as big a deal, but when you're talking about the reconstruction that you just described, you, with potential stormwater implications, that's a bigger project, and, you know, I, I think the DPW director would say that the best practice would be to address whatever's on the ground at that point in time. So I, and I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear from the beginning.
Now, I do understand now what you're talking about, right? I thought you were talking about just roadway, water, water main replacement.
These are services that run underneath the shared access or easement, in the case of Swan Pond Road.
Yeah, that makes sense, yes. Well, let's have a weigh-in now, like Mr. Wallner suggested, let's bring this to these different directors for our weigh-in.
Send it to the Planning Commission and the DPW Director for feedback.
Definitely, yes, yes.
We just have them address the issues that we talked about tonight, and give us a recommendation.
Okay, so moving along, I think we're on to the rest of, hopefully we addressed most of your town administrators' report with the bike, the rail, the rest. Do you have a lot more, Mr. Gilberto?
I.
One more, maybe two more things?
I can, I can speak quickly, and I won't speak to the things that have already happened.
No, it's all right. It's all right, take your time, the hour is late.
Skipping through to the third item in the report, we've been approached by an area synagogue with congregants who lived in North Reading, who live in North Reading, offering to place a menorah on the town common, so we've identified an area in the upper area of the common that's accessible to the parking lot at the senior center, at which the menorah is expected to be placed probably within the next week or so. Told that details about a possible ceremonial lighting will be available soon, I hope to have that information from the rabbi, from the congregation, as soon as tomorrow morning. We wouldn't be hosting the event, but it would be accommodated at the common, much like the tree lighting that took place earlier in December.
Nice. How, how big is the menorah? Is it?
I don't have the dimensions, I can tell you that I believe it was previously affixed to a cello in the town of Andover, I believe, but in terms of its size, I, I don't, I don't want to misstate it. That, for some reason, but roughly three feet tall, stands.
Oh, okay.
Stands out to me. I attached a copy of tobacco regulations pending with the Board of Health, they were the subject of a hearing that was held on November 21st, and I'm told that the hearing has been continued until January. I also attached updated information regarding the state's activities on this matter. The Board of Health is going to evaluate its proposal and the state's new regulations at their meeting in January. DPW is being a town-wide municipal water system leak detection survey, that's expected to take approximately three months. The work will be in the southeast air, will begin in the southeast area of town, near the Lynnfield Town Line, and will continue moving north and west. The work is being conducted by Arthur Pyburn and Sons Technical Services, and their vehicles are marked accordingly, the police department's also been informed. Auxiliary election workers are needed for calendar year 2020, the town clerk's office is looking for workers to supplement our current team of dedicated individuals in anticipation of the upcoming 2020 election cycle. The attached information is available on the town website or by calling the town clerk's office at 978-357-5218. Finally, I attached a copy of an agenda for a recent transportation and climate initiative briefing that I attended with Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs Katie Thiaris, I think that's how you pronounce her name. Transportation and Climate Initiative is a regional collaboration of twelve northeast and mid-Atlantic states and the District of Columbia that seeks to improve transportation, develop clean, a clean energy economy, and reduce carbon emissions from the transportation sector. The participating states are Connecticut, Delaware, Maine, Maryland, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Vermont, and Virginia. Additional information, including a report that was referenced in the meeting, is attached as a follow-up to this meeting, I'll be revisiting the potential advantages of the town becoming its state-designated green community through the State Department of Environmental Resources, and that concludes my report, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. O'Leary mentioned, and has reminded me, we have a Conservation Commission member
who recently went through a certification program at the state level, Melissa Campbell, she was reappointed this evening, so we congratulate her, not only for the time that she has put into the commission, but for the time she put in outside of her service on the commission to go through that program.
Mr. Gilberto, I should have asked you this in our last item on the agenda, but what is the status with Swan Pond and their pursuit of the?
There's been no change in status, to my understanding, you know, we've not heard any update from the residents, nor have we requested one, and on our end, obviously, we're working on the policy stuff, so, no, no change.
Okay. Any, members have any questions? We're on to old and new business, Mr. O'Leary?
Just want to mention, you know, a couple, four weeks ago, three weeks ago, we honored Larry Dysart and for his service to the community, and Larry passed away a couple weeks ago, his services were yesterday and today, you know, to his wife and children, again, our condolences and heartfelt gratitude for sharing Larry with us for the last forty-plus years and the services that he provided to the community, and stimulating and, and allowing the accessibility to youth basketball, not just in North Reading, but regionally, tremendous contributions, not just in that front, but on many other fronts here in our community. So our condolences should go out again to Larry, and I'm, I'm pleased that we were able to recognize him, you know, and he was able to see it on television that night, appreciated it too, so. Sad by his passing, but grateful for his presence in our community for forty-plus years and his level of service. Additionally, the, just like to state that I think, you know, what occurred this evening in relation to the Board of Appeals is unfortunate, and I think the repercussions are going to be felt for a long time to come, and I think the standing of this Board in relation to the boards and committee commissions and appointments that we make have been harmed, but again, we'll get through it. And I think it was a mistake, I think it's unfortunate, it was avoidable, and hopefully going forward, Board learns from it. And other than that, wishing everybody in the community a happy holiday season, happy Hanukkah, and again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and look forward to addressing the issues that are before us with the Board in the upcoming year. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mr. Wallner, you good? Mr. Schultz?
Again, Merry Christmas to everybody out there, and my condolences to Dysart family. Also, a number of residents have reached out to me about having a petition on town meeting in June for term limits for this Board, and it's something I think that should probably should be explored at some point too, and I'll be meeting with them in the future on that. Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I would just like to give a shout-out to Alpere, Para, Advanced Photo about Light Up Main Street, I think that it's been great seeing all the businesses lighten up, I'd love to see more, it, it really looks pretty when you drive down Main Street. And a shout-out to Jerry Farrelly and Pat Lee for opening up the Horseshoe Grill on Sunday for the DCF kids and all the people that came out and wrapped presents and, and helped out, it was a great community effort, real feel-good, so, happy holidays to everybody.
I almost forgot one more thing, if I may, The Music Man, you were going to say it, I don't know. If you didn't see it, it was like a Broadway production. I mean, those kids did a fabulous job, and it was something that, if you went to Boston, paid money at a theater in Boston, you would have been happy walking out of there.
Feel that every time she does something.
Great job by those kids. It was an amazing job, and I, I went to it twice, and it was tremendous.
I saw four shows of The Music Man. If you did not see it, you missed something incredible, Mrs. Kane did an amazing, those kids, the maskers, they were unbelievable, just incredible.
It was a professional show.
From the beginning to the end, entertaining the whole, example, you forget you're watching high school performers, you really do, they were excellent. The last show, I happened to sit near a woman who's the aunt of the choreographer, Chrissy, Chrissy Bowman, and she told me that, that thirty-three years earlier, her five children had all participated in the Medford Music Man production, but ours blew that out of the water, of course, so. It, it was just an unbelievable jo, job, phenomenal, phenomenal group of talented actors, technicians, dancers, singers.
They had a horse.
They had a horse, it was, it was really something else, so congratulations to them, it was excellent. And, and also just wanted to thank my colleagues, I, I know we had a little raucous evening this evening, but I do think we're, you know, committed to progress for the town and moving things forward for the town, and I just want to thank, before we head into the new year, thank my colleagues for your, you know, commitment and your service, which is also volunteer, and from what I've seen so far as the chair, it's miles and miles and miles and hours and hours and hours of commitment that people make to this Board, just like they do to other Boards, and just like we, we celebrated Mr. Dysart for his, you know, hours of commitment throughout the years, and so I just want to thank my colleagues, because I appreciate your commitment to all of the things you're doing on behalf of the town and on behalf of all the different boards and commissions and the other projects we've put you on to, to help out with. And it's unseen, it's unspoken of, and I just want to, I want to acknowledge that, and also wish everybody a, you know, happy, happy holidays, we won't meet again before the new year, happy, holy, healthy new year, let's just keep moving forward, and, you know, we, we definitely don't agree on everything, we don't have to agree on everything, we're five different members, and five different members can have five different opinions on what the color blue is, and that's life, and that, you know, that, that doesn't, you know, we should just keep moving forward, and I appreciate your commitment, and.
Just, what other thing we forgot?
We did, how could we have forgotten anything else? Quarter of eleven.
I know, but John Bernat is retiring.
Oh, yes.
January first, John Bernat is retiring January first as superintendent of schools, he's been with us for seventeen years as principal of the high school and superintendent of schools, and the chair and I and the town administrator were present at his last school committee meeting, and there was nice testimonials by different people that.
Yes.
Put forth, and we were at the financial planning team meeting just this Friday, his last one of those, and what's interesting, I said to John, it's a good thing that, you know, you have all these experiences now, because now he's an expert in wastewater treatment plants, he's an expert in, in lighting and, in school systems, I said, he's experts in building the, the world's most expensive bathrooms, you know, the fields, so he's got a lot of different skill sets now that he can fall back on in his retirement, but I know all of us wish him well and along, healthy and happy retirement, and are certainly grateful for his service to our community, you know, as a, as a true professional, and again, he's, he's done a great job, particularly in fostering good relations with this Board, the School Department, the town administration, so, to John, wish him nothing but good health and long, happy and healthy retirement.
You set us up well to keep moving in that trajectory too.
I did.
All right, okay, anything, oh, uh-oh, Mr. Gilberto.
Very important, I've been alerted to some questions online with regard to the status of trash collection tomorrow, given the weather, and it remains on as scheduled, so items should be curbside by 6:30 tomorrow morning.
All right.
Trash and recycling, both scheduled to go forward.
That's important for anyone who's actually still watching this, all right, thank you. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Good done.